Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five Board of Alderman Budget Work Session. I'd like to ask Alderman Royal if she would open us up in prayer.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, as we gather today, we ask that your Spirit of Unity be present among us and guide us as we engage in meaningful discussion. We pray today, that, Father, we will address the budget and that you would give us the wisdom that we need, that you would give us the understanding and clarity that we need, and that, at the conclusion of this session, that we will have completed the task with our citizens in mind and our staff. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
If you would please stand with me if you pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please start the roll.
Alderman Frill. Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Beth.
Present.
Mayor Odom.
Here. And Madam Clerk, you said Alderman Kinsey is going to be about an hour late?
Yes.
And Alderman Frill?
He is out of town.
Okay. All right, first up is the discussion of recommended FY twenty five, twenty six budgets. Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Mayor Alderman. Appreciate you all being here this morning. So we are going to dive into the FY twenty six proposed budget. And just a little recap. When we started this process, it was back in November of two thousand and twenty four, where we started receiving input and having meetings with our department heads. In December, we did a brief survey with the board to see what you would support and what you would not support. That was in the form of if we recommended colas or if we had to balance the budget out of fund balance, what would be tolerable and some things like that. And so we moved through the early parts of two thousand and twenty five, continued meeting with department heads, looking at our revenue, projected revenues and what potential expenditures would be for the general fund and enterprise funds. And that's how we came to the recommendation that I made with the April twenty second Board of Alderman meeting during the City Managers' presentation. So we look forward to diving into more of that information with you shortly. The agenda for today will be an electric utility presentation, which we'll be doing shortly. Then we'll go on to the enterprise funds, the general fund, the other funds, and then just an update on the general obligation bond. And we've got time for further comment. Hope you'd like to speak on that. Anything else on that topic? So there again, that was our timeline, where on we're at today. The goal is to adopt this budget at the May thirteenth meeting, when we have a public hearing as well. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Charlie Bouchard to come up with the electric utility presentation. He has Chris Lund with Utility Financial Solutions. And online, we've also got Dawn Lund, who will probably be chiming in something. Charlie?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Alderman, Board of Alderman.
Good morning.
Happy to be here this morning with an opportunity to discuss the electric department. I had a request for some paper copies of the presentation. Staff's working on those, so they may come in here for some paper copies if you need them here shortly. Could you? Thank you. As you know, our electric service is essential to the community and it's essential for all that we do here. So how do we do this safely, reliably, affordably? Those are the things that keep me up at night. And that's why I think it's important to protect the community's investment in our electric utility and ensure it's financially healthy. A few of the items that I plan on discussing today. The subjects include what we're doing with our customer communication engagement services, customer text notifications. Believe it or not, artificial intelligence is emerging into our industry, so I'll take a few minutes to talk about what's going on there. Our line extension policy, we now have some data on that policy that we revised a few years ago. I'd like to share that with you. We'll discuss my capital plan, our cost forecast, rate modernization. We've heard we use that term in the past. And our financial study, we did one last year. Utility Financial Services helped us with that, so I invited them back this year to continue that process. And they're going to speak to that, those issues today. And then finally, I'll conclude with my recommendations. So customer engagement, customer communication and engagement services. Our current service provider is not meeting our needs nor our expectations. So we're in the process of converting from our current service provider to Doxum. And we should be completed sometime in the third quarter of this year. This is the service provider that helps us with printing our bills, mailing them out, payment histories, customer usage information, and our autograph. And it's not just for electric. This is for all of our enterprise services. So this is our current billing format. We thought it was the catch me out a couple of years ago when we went to this new version. It still falls short of my expectations and I think our customers' expectations and the last information. So here's a sneak peek of our new billing format draft, of what we're working on with our new service provider. Over on the left-hand side of the page, that first column, you'll notice right out of the gate, you can now see percentage of usage in your bill. And then to the right side of that, your costs are finalized. Below that, we now have more space for messaging and we can expand our messaging for flavor of the day type of messages. And we're now able to use a QR code embedded into our bill for things that referring customers to. The right web link to connect for autograph payments and things of those natures. On the right side, you'll see where we start breaking down the bill into usage components and billing components. And customers can see the details of their usage. And over to the very far right, welcome back the graph. Lot of feedback from our customers. When we had to remove the graph, our current service provider, one of the areas they fell short on is they could not tell us where the data was coming from the graph. I could not validate it. So we stopped doing that with the last billing improvement. Customers really like that. They like to refer to it. I believe by using that graph, a lot of, saves a lot of customers from calling our customer service department because that information answers a lot of questions. So it's not finalized. There's some other things in here that I'd like to add and pushing for. For example, I'd like to line up temperatures with the graph. That answers a lot of questions so you can see seasonally usage. So it's a work in progress. If you are interested in this, I can email you a copy and you can share your comments and ideas. And I'll be happy to try to integrate it as we move forward. Texting capabilities. We launched our texting capabilities about a year and a half ago and we're now expanding its use. If you happen to be a customer that has an updated phone number with our customer information system, you may have started noticing more activity. And as a result, we're relying less on our social media pushes and announcements and focusing our message directly to our customers. First example is some what we call automated and prescriptive type texting. You start on the left-hand side of the page. Power goes out, our meter sees it, and our meter triggers a message that is prescriptive in nature. Electric service has been confirmed out at your location. When that's restored, the meter sees power has been restored, triggers another message, electric service has been restored. Yeah, the customer also gets an opportunity. If that's not the right message, they can text out. They still have an outage. They can ask us for their status or they can quit. They opt out of this altogether if they happen not to be successful and be longer restored as well with their system. And some of our responses, there are no outages at this time. We've now expanded and we're doing some custom scheduled texts so we can schedule these announcements to go out. We can also do long ad hoc as needed. For example, the electric department power system operators responding to weather-related outages, text out to report an outage. So when weather starts heating up or getting bad, we can send out a message to do that. I used it this winter during our cold snap that we had, one in January and one in February. We did hit an energy emergency. And I was communicating with our customers through text that local demands for energy are expected to increase. As the situation escalated and that emergency escalated, we escalated the message and started asking customers to conserve. We had further messaging that we were ready to go out with should it have escalated to that point. But fortunately, it didn't this year. And we sent out another message terminating the emergency or letting our customers know that energy is back to predicted levels. Another example of scheduled notices is we had irregular office hours at our customer service center. So we posted those directly to our customers. And then we also used it to tap our customers on the shoulder and ask them to participate in a survey that we did recently. I'll be coming back to you with those results once they come in. In the near future, I hope that we can expand the number of characters that we can use in a text, the ability to use web links in the text. For example, we think weather is going to be bad. Here's a link to our outage notification, our outage map. Follow it yourself, take them right to that site. So I'm real excited about it. I think it's helping out our customers, it's helping out our operations. So if you have any ideas on this stuff, you know, and continue to expand this.
Charlie, is this for electric only or?
Electric only.
Other customers?
It gets weird when we try to integrate other systems because a lot of it's tied to the actual meter. But if you have an application in mind, we'll certainly try to look at it. I championed a lot of things in my career over the last thirty-plus years. And as early as last year, I never thought I would be championing artificial intelligence. Yeah, but here it is. Our current customer service billing and payment service provider has offered us a proof-of-concept project to use artificial intelligence. And it's has my attention. Next page. We're focusing on customer service. They're offering us two use cases and two portals, such as our phone number, our phone system, and possibly our website. So we're going through this and giving it a lot of thought on what particular use cases may be best to relieving pressure off a customer service and responding to the needs of our customers. So please, if you have any ideas or thoughts on this, let me know as we explore this in more detail. I would like to think that if we are not committed to doing it, we probably shouldn't go through the proof of concept. So if we go through the proof of concept, say, yeah, we really like this, this is good, and then pull the plug, probably a waste of time. So we're trying to vet that upfront. Once again, if you have thoughts on AI, how we can use it in customer service, please let me know as we explore this. I'd like to take a few minutes now and talk about our line extension policy and how it's been performing. As you know, we revised our previous policy in November of two thousand and twenty-two and that was largely driven in part due to pressures from developers. So today, total lots, meters that I have forecasted, I have plans from developers, they're thinking about it or doing it. I have twenty-one thousand meters already, we cited line extensions for twenty-one thousand meters. To date, since November of two thousand and twenty-two, we've done line extensions that serve seven hundred and forty-one meters. Average cost to set service at each lot for the utility is fifty-one hundred dollars, almost fifty-two hundred dollars. The average cost to the developer for us to give them service.
Is that twenty-one thousand or twenty-one hundred, Charlie?
Twenty-one hundred. Did I type it wrong? Did I say it wrong? Thank you. The average cost to the developer is eight hundred and seventy-two dollars per lot. If I look at all twenty-one hundred forecasted meters and the average cost for the utility to serve it, we're looking at a total forecasted investment of about eleven point two million dollars over the time of development. To date, the utilities contributed three point eight million dollars, which includes our labor, material, and equipment. And to date, the developers contributed five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. That's what they paid us upfront just to do those line extensions. So the utility's deferred three point three million dollars to another time. And the way our policy is written, the intent is to collect that three point three million dollars in our retail rates. And if we do that in our retail rates, the average investment recovery less our power supply cost is three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars per year that we'll recover. So the current time to recover our three point eight million dollar investment is eight and a half years. That's assuming all houses are built today. All houses are at full load, no changes in our wholesale power supply costs and no changes in retail rates. So is that good, is it bad? That's up for you folks to decide. I can tell you, and by experience, traditionally commercial industrial businesses, if you can't get a one-to-one and a half-year return on investment, they're tapping out. Other industries go longer. Medical services goes longer, government goes longer. Infrastructure has a tendency to go longer in some cases. Education systems go longer in their investments. But right now, our investment's taking about eight and a half years to pay back.
Charlie, we don't have all day, so we'll have to be careful how this conversation goes. But for many years, it was always the mentality of the city to grow our customer base, to spread the cost of the investment that was made back in the eighties through electric cities. Now that those plants have been sold to Duke, that actually comes off next year, I believe, what remaining debt we owe. I'm asking you a question that's going to be probably a difficult question for you to answer. But from a business perspective, my question is, are we at the point where we no longer need to grow because it's unprofitable?
That's a tough question.
I know the answer to it, I just want to hear yours.
My answer is ultimately to follow the direction of the community. But you're best off serving density. So you've built your lines out so far, it's best to fill that area in with more meters and collect more revenue. The more revenue you collect, the more the utility contributes to the general fund. So there's a benefit there. Chasing a light bulb to Morehead City, probably not in our best interest. So we start getting into territorial laws, which are very complex and difficult to navigate in North Carolina. We do have compliments out there already. These locations there, we have twenty-one hundred meters. Those developers are expecting us to serve. But to your point, I don't think we should chase a light bulb to Kinston or Morehead City. We should focus on filling in that density, the areas that we have.
So the developers that are expecting us to serve them, we've essentially been told that it costs more for them to get on City of New Bern Electric because of our line extension policy versus Duke, correct?
It depends who's telling it. It's mixed. Duke has a policy that is similar to ours. Ours is two-year credit, theirs is a two-year credit. I know the developers want to work with us because we're faster, we can do it quicker, and that's part of their concerns.
I think it goes back to a conversation we've had for a few years now. We're servicing customers that are outside of our city limits and Duke is servicing customers inside of our city limits that still feel like there needs to be a conversation with Duke on where we go from here. Because the further we expand out, the more expensive it is to service those customers when we literally have customers across the street that are on Duke versus City of New Bern. So at some point in time, probably the new board, when they're seated next year, that conversation with Duke really needs to happen. I know we've gone back and forth a couple of times about it, but I think they've had some change in leadership in that department at Duke that would be willing to talk to us at this point.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
On the next page, I gave some data in case you want to do it.
Let me just speak a bit more, Charlie.
On this next slide, I gave you just the details. If anybody wanted to dive into it, be happy to discuss it. But to your point, a lot of these existing, a lot of these developments are already within the city limits. Fragmore, URI's, Westenberg. So the details there, if anybody wants to talk about it. Next slide. Here's my recommended operating capital for fiscal year twenty-six. I'm new to City Managers. We'll be talking about more of this later this morning. So I won't spend a lot of time on this. It's my typical operating budget's three to four million dollars. This is kind of the same range, equipment, some infrastructure improvement and system maintenance included in here. And then the next slide is my five-year capital improvement plan. I do have a ten-year capital improvement plan, if anybody wants to see it. Starting when we're in fiscal year twenty-six, meter data management system is essential to our rates and our AMI system. This was previously approved in the two thousand and twenty-three budget, but due to the complexity of scoping this out and getting a contract that was acceptable with all the scope in it, I wasn't able to do that in that fiscal year. So it's been pushed out and it shows up in my operating budget. Or my capital plan, I should say. Seven million dollars to replace the Glemberg substations. And we have three substation transformers, I should say. We have three transformers there, all three of them are fifty years old. And then a twenty point four million dollars is the electric system capacity improvement project, which is the substation we've been talking about. That's something the board has already approved in the form of a project fund. And they funded it with some make-ready money, which we've used to acquire land, easements right away, start some preliminary engineering. So I'm looking for funding on the rest of that. In two thousand and twenty-seven, looking to make improvements to our operations and control center and modernize that part of the organization. Our generation fleet is beyond its serviceable life and that's about one million dollars a megawatt. We're authorized nineteen megawatts of allocated generation. We have about twelve megawatts in service. Due to its age, I can only get about five to seven megawatts each month running. So if you apply the avoided cost for running this generation, which is twenty-two thousand dollars per megawatt, it's about a three point one to three point seven million dollar cost avoidance to us in our power supply cost improvement to refresh our generation fleet. And the rest of it, four hundred thousand dollars for servers, that's like to the based on age and replacing our systems as they age out. And then improving some, right sizing some critical feeders that are, we can no longer use to transmit power because they're undersized at this time because load is growing. And then undergrounding critical feeders throughout the community. And then high-speed architecture is eleven million dollars to basically more sectionalize where faults are occurring. And we have the ability to reduce the number of customers experiencing that average. Next slide is our power supply cost and forecast that I received from the Kempa. I would expect this to change. It's largely influenced by fuel costs, carbon reduction, Duke Energy Progress and Duke Energy Carolina's intent to merge in two thousand and twenty-seven. Keeping in mind that Duke Energy Carolina's, is lower cost of power than the east side of the state, which is us. So it's very interesting to see how that works out. The Carolina side, the west side of the state's not going to want to pay our costs and we certainly want their costs. So that's driving some of the speculation in the power supply market. Federal and state mandates are always a factor in our power supply costs. But most recently, now, July two thousand and twenty-five, the Kemp has approved a three and a half percent increase to our overall rates. Rider eight drops off, which is the debt service we have associated with the power supply cost, about two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars a month. And then another rider, one of those are the true-ups that I've been talking about over the last couple of years. That shows back up in October, eighty thousand dollars a month for twenty-four months. Then the forecasting, four and a half percent overall rate increases all the way through two thousand and twenty-nine with more riders coming on and off and on and off. Most years, we have two to three riders on at one time. And that takes us to our financial study discussion. Utility Financial Services came in last year and helped us with a financial study. And I asked them to come back this year as well. And I asked them to also take a moment to talk about rate modernization. We've heard me talk about that in the past. And we've already been doing some of it. We did it with electric vehicle charging rates. They helped us with that. They helped us with our unused rates design. They helped us identify and work through retirement of some underperforming and underutilized rates. And they're also presently working with me on improving our solar offering, our product share. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Chris Lund to Utility Financial Services to talk about the study and rate modernization.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see everybody. Thank you for having us again. Our company was here about a year ago to present our study findings from last year. We refreshed our study to come to you today and figure what we're thinking. It looks like a best of approach moving forward. We do have, again, my name is Chris Lund, I'm with Utility Financial Solutions. Again, we did your study a year ago, just completed this study here for next fiscal year. I believe with us remotely on the aisle there is Dawn Lund. She's the Vice President of Utility Financial Solutions. Dawn, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. You're loud and clear, thank you.
Yes, I can.
So Dawn is what I call the financial guru of our company. She also happens to be my wife, so she's my boss on and off the fence, so to speak. So she does a great job with bringing all this financial data together. We work as a team to then formulate a plan, considering all aspects of the operation of the electric department, to try to figure out a plan. How can we move forward? What do we need to do to rates to keep the utility financially sound? How can we do that to keep minimizing impacts to your customers and keep the utility healthy? One thing that's interesting about the electric department, but I think you all are familiar with the terminology, is we refer to it as an enterprise fund, okay? And when we talk about what is an enterprise fund, it means that the revenue that you charge or the rates that you charge your customers, the dollars you collect from your customers using that service need to fund and pay for running that department. So they typically don't have an enterprise fund, typically doesn't have revenue sources from taxes, revenue sources consistently from any grant funding, that's guaranteed. So the way that they sustain themselves is through the rates to their customers. So that's true for your electric department, your water department, your wastewater department, as well as your solid waste department. I was kind of struck this morning when I left the hotel. I grabbed a bottle of water right here and I went to pay for it because I'd already checked out of my hotel. And she said, it'll be four dollars and eighty cents, please. And I was kind of a little bit shocked and I thought about it, you know? I quickly pulled up the New Bern water rate schedule. You know how much you charge for a thousand gallons of water delivered to the tap to your customer's home? Three dollars and three cents for a thousand gallons of water. So that one bottle of water just bought us, filled us with about fifteen hundred gallons of water delivered right to your tap. delivered right to your tap. So the reason why I'm bringing that up is we tend to really undervalue, you know, public services, assetized funds, water, wastewater, electricity, solid waste, all of which have to be funded from the customers using those services. So we have to balance those things with what values are really providing and how do we fairly do that and keep the utility financially sustained and not shock your customers and do it slowly and gradually so it's tolerable? So that's the plan that we've tried to put together today in a nutshell. So again, we're Utility Financial Solutions. We're an international consulting firm. We do studies like this around the world. We quite often speak for and teach for American Public Power Association, which is the national electric organization. We also speak at a lot of the Electric Cities Conferences. We usually are speakers and presenters at their conferences as well. So not only do we see a national view of power, but we're very honed in and very much often, we often work with North Carolina cities through Electric Cities. So the next slide I want to talk about, and this is a pretty deep concept, is rate, rate modernization. Charlie has mentioned that we, we've worked on and touched on a few of these areas over the last few years, the electric vehicle charging, working on solar, working on a few different things. So what we have here is sort of an example of what we envision your residential rates potentially looking like five, 10 years down the road. So don't panic that I'm proposing that the rates on the right are what we're going to do next year and the rates on the left are your current rates. This is a future look to what they might look like. So if you look at the rates on the left, those are all highlighted in blue. Those are your current electric rates that you charge your residential customers. You have a fixed $11.20, you charge them per meter each month. Then you have various charges for different usages of energy from roughly 11 cents up to 13 cents. You have that power cost adjustment, which is that balancing mechanism for power supply changes. You bring that all down and the average residential bill per month is around $145 per month. So all in, we'll get to it later. I don't have it right at the tip of my tongue, but I believe it's, don't quote me, but I think it's around 15 or 16 cents per kilo hour. I have that on a later slide. So you can see on the right, that's potential future look of what those rates might look like. And essentially what we're doing is we're trying to make it so the average customer's bill doesn't noticeably change. You can see the total dollar amount on the left at roughly $145 is the same as on the right at roughly $145. So what we're doing though, is we're trying to change and fine tune where those charges and where those collections come in from. So we want to slowly and methodically increase that fixed portion of the customer's bill. We want to slowly decrease that energy charge. And the reason for that is we're trying to make it so everyone eventually has access to wholesale power costs. It might sound strange, but we're trying to get the fixed cost recovery fairly and appropriately up in the customer charge. Give everybody access to wholesale power supply and the energy cost and then charge what we call a distribution peak usage charge down to fund your distribution system. So it's just a different way that the components would be on the bill. And you say, well, why go through all this hassle if all you're going to do is have the same bill? Well, traditionally, when we do these studies, we always try to make sure that what the residential customer is paying is fair versus what the commercial customer is paying, which is also fair, what the industrial customer is paying. Well, what we lose sight of often in that strategy is, well, is it fair to every residential customer within how our rates are currently structured? So if you take your current rate structure and apply it to a certain customer and apply it to another customer, there might be some unfairness going on. Okay? And what we want to do by evolving to this future rate structure is it levelizes that and makes it fair across all customers within the same grouping. So one residential customer to another residential customer would be fair. So in order to support that, Charlie has mentioned a couple of times, it's MDM, AMI, buzzwords, basically to say, hey, we need to be able to meter that data so we know what their usages are and we need to be able to appropriately build that metered data. So the proper metering system, the proper data collection system, the proper way to get that data from the metering to your billing system, that will all plug into the line of all those rates. So this is a little reminder of where we've been with the New Bern Electric Department rates. Last year we presented this and we called it the 10-year history because at the time we didn't have any rate increases, well, we didn't have any rate changes for over 10, well, almost 10 years. The last time you had changes at that time were a series of rate decreases from 2015 through 2017, which cumulatively on simple math equals just under 18% rate decrease at the time. Last year, you made some hard decisions and put through a series of two rate increases, two at 6% on the base rates. And you also allowed the electric department to introduce that power cost adjustment tool or PCA balancing mechanism. And I might say, the reason why it says with restrictions is we'll talk about how is that PCA performing and what might be leading to that either performance or underperformance. So then from there, we'll talk about what does the plan look like? You know, what are we, what are we seeing? What are we recommending? Best practice for you to do for next fiscal year 26? And then what does the future look like out to fiscal 30? So I believe Charlie asked you to at least commit to one year of rates. Last year, it was an evolution of what we just mentioned there. And I think the intent is to have you consider what to do for next fiscal year and take the following years at a later date. So we're not asking you to commit to multiple years at this time, just to kind of give you a look to what we're seeing out in the future. So what that future plan looks like is essentially three to four and a half percent rate increases to your base rates over that projection period, 2026 to 2030. We'll come in back to that detail and show you some different scenarios of why I'm suggesting there might be a possible range that would work for you. The next slide is showing your cash history and cash balance. Obviously, the electric department needs to maintain certain levels of cash so it can pay its bills, so it can respond to outages, to storms, so it can pay its power supply, it can pay its staff, it can pay its capital improvement needs. So you can see, we went back to 2015, actually, this was 27, fiscal year ending 2018, I'm sorry. And you can see you have a cash bill in the department of $19 million. You see the top green line is the 110 days, I need my glasses, sorry. Yeah, it's 110 days of cash. The red line is your current fiscal, fiscal policy, that you have a 90-day minimum cash policy that you're trying to strive for to hold cash in the electric department. And you can see you fell below that policy back in 2022. And then you can see back in 2024 is when it sort of bottomed out. And I did want to give you a little snapshot of where it's trending backward with the series of rate increases you did do last year. We are seeing a little, a little rebound, which is a good thing. All right? So you can see we're, we're planning to end this fiscal year, which ends in June, at just under $9 million. So we're still quite a ways away from that minimum 15 million or higher that we'd like to see you at, but at least it's not continuing to drop.
Kim, back, back to that chart. When, when did we take the funding out from MetroNet? When did we take some projects, some money out and put it in a project fund?
We did in 2021, I think.
So that's reflective in this chart, correct? It would have to be, right?
So are you referring to roughly 2.8 of NCDRT?
Uh-uh.
It's something different.
Yep, it was the MetroNet, uh, make credit broadband.
Correct. There was, money was transferred into a project fund, about $3 million right around that time. And I believe that's then accounted for as, I don't want to say the word encumbered, but that's not the right word.
Well, we closed that account, that project fund, and then now.
But at that point in time, that money was moved over. Since then, finances moved that money back into the fund balance. And we're now expensing that out of our operating budget.
And then how much was the DOT project?
DOT projects, we never had to put any money into. When I first got here, they owed us about $450,000. And I stopped the project and said, until we get reimbursed, we're not doing anything. So we resolved that. They gave us $450,000. Finance created a project fund and we loaded that money in, in that project fund. And we've been expensing out of that project fund from that so-called seed money. And we're also getting revenues into that based on our cost of charging NCDRT. Does that answer your question?
Yep. Thank you.
So we'd like to talk about your, the age of your system or the infrastructure. So to run the electric department, similar to all your other departments, electric sewer, water and sewer as well, you have infrastructure that you have to install and maintain in order to deliver those services. So you look outside, you see, you know, the poles, the wires, the transformers, all the substations, all the infrastructure that it takes to deliver power across your system. That's what we track over the years and we call it historic investment, meaning how much money is historically have you invested into that infrastructure? The next line is something called net book value, meaning as that infrastructure ages and as it wears out, we track it through a system, and that's something called depreciation. Essentially, the amount, the value of the amount of the infrastructure that's being consumed each year, we reduce that off the books and then that's the net value of the infrastructure in your system. So the reason why this is important is it gives us sort of a gauge as to how aged our system is. And you can see we use 2018 as a benchmark. And you can see that at that time, your system was 55% depreciated, meaning you had 45% useful life of your system on. Okay? You can now see, pass forward to 2025, then we're 60% depreciated, so you have 40% of your useful infrastructure remaining. So what that is suggesting is you're not reinvesting back in your system as quickly as your system is aging. So it's just a little gauge to keep in mind that the level of your reinvestment in your infrastructure, which directly ties to Charlie's capital improvement plan and the DFR. So the next four slides, there's a lot, there are a lot of numbers on these slides. These are what we call the financial projection summary. What this does, when we do your studies, we pull in all sorts of data. We pull in all of the financial data from the revenue from customers. We pull in all of your expense and budgets. We pull in all of your loan that you have to pay on. We look at your capital plans. We, we bring in all of the financial data and this is the one screen that we pull it all into. And this allows us, it's kind of like a dashboard on a car where you can kind of see all the ages and all the things that are going on. Well, this is essentially our financial dashboard, if you will. So we can benchmark, you know, how are things all coming together? And what this screen is simulating, if you were to do 0% rate increase over the next five years, this is, would give you an idea of what would happen with your cash balance, with your financial targets like your debt coverage ratio, which is a measurement of how your debt affordability, can you afford your debt, make your debt payments? This also would be tracking, what would your cash balance look like? And this would also shows the projected capital plan. So from left to right, you can see the fiscal year 2026 through 2030. The next column is the projected rate change. That means how much in this plan would your customer's bill change? And you can see we've set this to zero to simulate what would happen to your financial situation if you did raise rates. Okay? And you can see the next column is that debt coverage ratio, meaning that's how much revenue you're bringing in, net cash from operations to pay your debt service payments. In other words, can you afford to pay your debt? And you can see how in, as soon as 2027, it drops below a one. Anything that drops below a one means you can't afford to make your debt payments in that year. So very quickly, you would not be able to even afford making your debt payments. You can see though, in this assumption, we have, this is a plan to try to support the five-year capital plan. So you can see that capital improvement plan, 28 million, the first year, 29 million, 27 million, three and seven, or excuse me, 3.6 and 3.7. So you can see if, if we support Charlie and his capital improvement needs, but don't raise rates, this is what the financial scenario would look like. You wouldn't be able to afford it. Okay? So you can see your adjusted operating income, which is the bottom, bottom line, financial line of what the finances would look like every year, you'd be operating on a loss as, as early as next year. Your cash would go, projected to go negative to 3.5 million negative, which would be impossible to do unless you're doing some borrowing or, or taking money from some other funds, which I don't know where that money would come from out of 2029. You can see your days working capital would, would never exceed that minimum 90, so go from 75 deteriorate to 66 and be negative days cash on hand. So obviously, this, this plan doesn't work, but the reason why we're showing it today is I want you to realize that we can't support your current cost of running the department and also make these improvements without having rate increases. So the next slide shows, well, what if we tell Charlie just to go away and we don't put anything back into the system? So notice in this plan, you go to that third column, annual capital improvement plans and we completely zeroed it out. You said, Charlie, put the brakes on indefinitely. You're never going to spend another penny on anything other than paying staff and keeping the system running along. What would that look like? Okay, you want to hold rates at zero? If that's the decision here, we're not going to spend any more money period, what is your financial picture look like? You can see even with that, with cutting all capital expenditures over the five-year plan, your debt coverage ratio still goes negative. Your system becomes 73% depreciated. We only have 27% of your usable system left. Your adjusted operating income goes negative by the third year. If you're losing a million dollars plus, 2, 2, 6 million. And then your cash would just hover around 14 to 18 million dollars. So you would basically barely be able to harbor the cash where might start to feel a little more reasonable. But again, you have not raised rates, you have not reinvested anything in the system and you really haven't improved your cash position. You're losing money, you don't be able to afford any debt. So even if you tell Charlie to go away and don't make any reinvestments, a zero rate increase really still doesn't work. So the next slide would be, well, what if we did a 3%, cut out Charlie's capital, go away Charlie, we don't want to spend any money. We want to build cash. So let's raise some rates. We'll support you on that, but we're going to wait on spending any more cash. Okay, what does that look like? How quickly and what sort of cash could we build by implementing five years of 3% rate increases if we didn't spend any more cash at all? You can see there, our cash balance would be projected to be about 42 million. That sounds kind of nice, right? Well, however, you really don't ever want to spend it down below 15 to 20 million. So if you say we can spend 20 million of it, he could then theoretically in the sixth year, maybe just start on the first year of his capital use, five years, five to six years from now, after doing 3% rate increases and having him wait. The challenge with that is more than lightly, I can't predict the future, but if the future's any life would expend, this capital budget, if you wait six years, it's probably going to be double or triple that budget. So are you waiting to save 20 million over six years to have him start spending? He'll probably do the double or triple his capital expenditures. So the next slide, 10, is what we feel is the best combined approach given your current given your current PCA policy, and we'll talk about those details here in a second. This would be a series of four and a half percent rate increases. This would be bonding, issuing revenue bonds for the first three years of capital needs. And then paying cash for years 20, fiscal 2029 and fiscal 2030 for your capital needs. So we need to borrow for the first three years, and we pay cash for the last two years. And you can see everything on this chart. With doing those little bit more incremental rate increases from a three to a four and a half, with that bonding allows you to meet all those financial goals that we've set out for you. Keeps your cap, cash healthy, tries to minimize the impact to customers by doing it slowly and incrementally, and allows Charlie to be going, not reinvesting and keeping your system reliable and stable, and trying to hedge that those projects don't go double and triple in cost the longer you wait. So you can see your cash balance looks healthy. We have the plan at 23 million cash. The debt coverage ratio stays healthy, be able to pay your bills. Your system has been being reinvested over time, so it's becoming less depreciated. So a newer system. You can see your days works from 90 days, 91 days, up toward closer to 120 days, which we feel as financial consultants is where we would like to see you go, closer to 120 days versus hovering below or under or near that 90 day. A lot of bond rating agencies are likely to see utilities in the 200-plus days cash on hand. So don't let this 120 days scare you. That's pretty common in most enterprise funds are striving to, to regular days cash on hand. So the reason why we feel this is combined best approach, again, is because it keeps the impact to customers as minimal as possible, getting, allowing you to continue to reinvest in your system, keeping your cash position healthy, your financial key targets healthy, and your base cash on hand healthy. This scenario is under your current power cost adjustment methodology, which if you recall, well, that's in two slides from now, so I'll come back to that. This next slide is basically the same plan, which would also be a combined best approach, but allowing you to potentially do a series of 3% rate increases each year instead of four and a half. And you might say, well, what gives? Why are you saying three there and four and a half there? The difference here is that this methodology would assume that it would allow electric department staff to keep that power cost adjustment in balance. And we'll go into great detail about that in the subsequent three or four slides. So that, that might be, so if it'd be a policy change to authorize staff to keep that power cost in balance, and which would allow you to use 3% instead of the current power cost adjustment methodology at four and a halves. So it goes nicely in that power cost adjustment discussion. Again, what is a power cost adjustment? It's a mechanism that staff tracks the actual cost of power costs on your monthly power bills. And we set a base rate that we're collecting on our rates. Currently, it's 8.17, is that sound right there? So embedding your retail rates to the customers, you're collecting and allocating 8.17 cents for the power cost, okay, for paying the power bills. What we do is we track all those monthly power bills, and we say, hey, is the cost changing from that 8.17 cents? And we try to collect, as it changes, we try to collect that difference through that PCA charge, which is an additional charge per kilowatt hour on the customer's bill. Now, the current methodology has a couple restrictions that you've allowed them to implement this. Is one, it can't go over 10 and a half. And also, they can't do any manual adjustments to the rate to keep the power cost adjustment in balance. And, and I'll, and I'll show that in detail in a few subsequent slides here. So it is very common that many utilities, when they have a PCA, will allow staff to do the needed adjustments to the PCA to make sure that, that it's actually true up and, and recognizing that, that recovery. So here's an example, power costs in your rates are 8.17 cents. We're tracking power costs in this example that says, hey, what if power costs went up to 8.17 cents? The PCA on the bill would be just over a cent, so 0.0054. So you take the new cost of power minus what you're collecting, and the difference is what you're adding to the bill. So try to keep it in balance. Well, the reason why it doesn't always stay balanced perfectly is the timing of when you pay the bill versus when you charge to your customers. There's different cycles on when the billing comes from the KEMPA versus when you're meter reading and billing your customers. So there's a misalignment of units, so they can never stay perfectly in balance. So that's, that additional piece that we are, we're missing currently is allowing staff to keep it in balance. So this next one is trying to graphically illustrate what's happening with that PCA. You can see the zero line here. If we could keep your power supply fully collected, all these lines would be as close to the zero line as possible. We want to be collected, we want your power costs to be collected from your customers fairly, so that you're basically at break even on your costs. Well, what's been happening is your power cost line up here monthly has really been dramatically varying. You can see here, I think this is January, February timeframe, you had a really cold, cold snap. So the power bill from the KEMPA went up. And then, you know, you can see that the PCA, since we couldn't do any manual adjustments, is predicted to underperform. So if you go to the next slide, please, I just kind of zero in on the fact that when you follow this line across, for the end of this fiscal year, we're projecting you to be undercollected by about 1.5 million dollars to the negative. So the utility would not have put through enough through the PCA for that fiscal year to fully balance your increase in the power cost. Okay? And that's a dynamic being caused primarily because of the misalignment of the units and the timing, and also that staff doesn't have the authority to manually adjust it to keep it in balance. So it might be one consideration, if you were to allow them to do that, we could look more to that 3% plan instead of the four and a half percent plan. So there's a lot of numbers on this slide, but where the prior slides showed it in graphical form, this is actually showing it in graphical form. So you can see, here's the 2025. Where that green line was ending under zero, meaning you're undercollected, there's that undercollection right there. So I mentioned about 1.5, it's actually over 1.6 million undercollected. You can see, this is the power supply forecast going out the next five years. It is projected to go down next year because of that, that service dropping off, but yet other riders are close behind. So we are expected, under the current methodology, that you'll still be 1.4 million under 5% at the end of the next year, under the current plan, not allowing staff to balance it. So the reason why we didn't go more negative is because power costs would come down, so it'll catch up a little bit, but we're still going to be, continue to be behind. So if you fast forward with this power supply projection, given the current PCA, not that, at the end of 2030, we projected to be behind almost 15 million dollars in power supply collection through the PCA, even though you have a PCA, but it's not being fully utilized because it has a penny and a half cap. You can see here, out in these three years, with this projected, you'd be exceeding that cap. And here, because they can't keep it in balance, because costs projected go up and go higher than the penny and a half, and it's not able to be reconciled, that you continue to show that potential underperformance. So that four and a half percent plan that I showed you is designed to recollect this slowly and evenly so that this doesn't become a negative 14. Will it be a negative 14 in the PCA? So because your base rates are four and a half percent instead of three, you catch it up there. So one way or another, the customer need to pay for it. But one plan is, it's going to be in base rates versus one plan that could be in the PCA. So this next slide shows the residential customer impacts over the next five years. There's a lot of data in here as well. But you can essentially see that the current average residential customer is paying about 145 dollars a month, 143, 49 for their monthly electricity. Under this plan, out 2030, they'd be paying on average 177 dollars and 41 cents, so about 33-ish dollars. I think last they calculated about seven dollars, or excuse me, 6 dollars and 78 cents a month increase per year for the average customer. So again, if you can avoid buying that lot of water at the hotel, you could probably offset that pretty quickly. The good news here is, what I always find interesting, if you don't mind flipping back to the previous one, a lot of people like to look at, what am I paying all in for electricity? If you take, the internet measurement when you deliver power is usually referred to as a kilowatt hour of usage. Your average customer, residential customer uses 998 kilowatt hours a month. So you take all of these billing line items, you add them all up, divide them by the 998 kilowatt hours they used, and that's on average, what do they really pay for that incremental kilowatt hour? And you can see, it's just over 14 cents a kilowatt hour there, and it's just under 18 cents a kilowatt hour here. Interestingly enough, I don't, I don't have the luxury to live in a municipal serviced area. I'm serviced by an industrial electric department company, and my bill is over 18 cents a kilowatt hour today. Charlie, I know you did some analysis on where we're going in 2015, and you're probably going to hit to that issue, so I don't know.
Yeah, I was dealing with that.
So I'm not going to steal Charlie's center. He's going to basically show you, we're in a pretty good position now. So key takeaways. You know, we'd like to ask his support next fiscal year, increase the base rates of four and a half percent, assuming that you stick with your current PCA methodology. If you do allow staff to keep the PCA in balance, we could bring that down to a 3%. You know, consider supporting Charlie's needs for his capital improvement plan to keep the system from aging and keep your, your system reliable. Look to invest in that MDM that Charlie needs to complete that from the metering all the way to the billing, so we can evolve the rates over the next five plus years. And then, you know, expect that, we're, we're going to be back each year and tell you, how's the plan performing? What do we need to do in the future? But hopefully, if we can all continue to work together on this, we shouldn't be back asking for more than inflationary type increases in the future. If we all get on this type of a routine and plan, we would, we would expect in the future to be more inflationary type increases. And then again, our recommendation is drive to that 120-plus days cash. So with that, I appreciate your time, and we'd like to see if, Don, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Chris, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I don't think you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
You can hear me, you did a great job. I, I don't have anything to add, Chris.
Okay. So are we having to take questions, discussion now or later, or at any time? Thank you for your time.
I have a question. So last year, you both made a presentation with recommendation. And my question for you would be, is what did the board do as far as, if you asked for something, did we give you 50% of what you recommended? Did we give you 80? Did we give you 100?
Well, it's a, it's a good question. The, the core of our presentation last year was a series of three, 5% base rate increases plus a traditional PCA, which is more of a fully balanced PCA. And at the time, I, I want to point out a few unique things that have happened since then. One, unfortunately, Charlie didn't get the grant funding, we thought, and were hopeful for last year. So last year, last year, in the plan with that ask, or with that plan, was an assumption that Charlie could potentially get 20 million of grant funding. That, that has dried up, so this new plan absorbs the fact that we're not planning on any grant funding any longer. It also considers the fact that instead of three years of incremental fives plus a full PCA plus that grant, you have supported a series of two 6% rate increases last year at different timing, one in July and one in December. So the timing, the compounding effect is, is, is nice, but the timing was a little different than the, the original plan. And then, again, as I described, the PCA, the way it's being a lot of implemented is projected to continue to be underperforming. So those are the main differences. But the nice thing is, if you just take rough numbers of what you did at two 6% and you take a 3%, just simple math, that's 15%. So what you did do, two sixes plus, now we're saying three more, is 15%, which is very similar to our three at, at time. So they're very, very similar plans still, but some circumstances have changed with, you know, grant funding and the way that the increases were timed and introduced and the way the PCA was implemented. So still very, very similar.
The KEMPA was also forecasting a 0% rate increase this year. And that's changed a few years.
The only other question I have would be, from your capital request to upgrade and, and expand the system, how much of that is for continuity and to continue servicing our current load of customers versus how much of that capital investment is to expand the system to take on additional load?
None of it is, it, it all will serve our existing customers. Right now, the majority of that money, let's just talk about the 7 million, the 7 million dollars for Glendale. That serves all the customers in the Glendale area. So if those fail, those customers feel that the age of those transformers. So that's, that's all Glendale. I don't have any expanded capacity built into that, any other bells and whistles. The 20 million dollars for the substation is to serve our capacity needs for current customers that we have today. It is sized to allow for the current customers, for additional customers, including the growth that I'm showing in the line extension, economic development. There's still a lot of territories within our, our boundaries that if that, if that load comes online, we don't have the capacity to serve. We were also, we were interrupted in December of this year because I didn't have the capacity. And that solves that problem. So none of it's designed really to go out and, and chase more load anywhere. It's to account for the reliability and the resiliency of our current customer base and fill in the gaps as economic development situations arise within our own footprint that we can respond to. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Can we go back to, I'd just like to take a couple moments and, and have, any other questions from the board before Charlie continues?
I have a question, if you would please. And you might have answered it with the mayor's question, but I didn't receive the clarity on it. Again, last year with the PCA, did we, I know we did not address or give you everything you asked for, but let me see again the difference between last year and this year. Like I said, it could have been addressed with the mayor's question, I didn't get the clarity on it.
Last year, we recommended, we recommended a series of three, 5% rate increases. We were asking for 5% per year for the next three years. And we were asking for all those to be approved at the same time. Plus, we wanted, we asked for a fully implemented PCA, which would allow, has no cap on it, and will allow staff to make those balancing adjustments on a monthly basis. And we were asking for that effect. And we were asking for that effective July 1st. What you folks decided then, and directed us to do, is have a 6% rate increase starting July 1st, and then later, effective July 1st, and then later in December, you directed us to have another 6% rate increase, and you authorized the PCA, but the PCA has some restrictions on it that don't, does not allow staff to balance it on a monthly basis, and it has a cap built into that as well. In addition to that, our power supply forecast at that time was for a 0% rate increase this year. And the capital that we had been requesting, we were hoping for and planning on in that plan to be funded through grants, and those grants are not available. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. So this budget you're asking, excuse me, you're recommending a 4.5% increase for the next five years?
Just one year. We're, and I'll get to my recommendations, I'll be clear on them here shortly, but yes, we're asking your consideration towards a four and a half percent rate increase this year. As an alternative, consider a 3% rate increase with a redrafted PCA that allows staff to update, balance it on a monthly basis, and then an opportunity to come back in future years and have the same conversation and refresh it. As you can see, things changed from last year to this year, just like our own personal budgets have gone. We just have to look at it every single year and put a lot of thought into it. Does that, did that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you much.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to Chris and Dawn, Jay and Dawn, that are working on it as well, and New Bern staff, Sherry, Amber, and Josh, if any folks know those people, they've been working on this long and hard for the last six months, and I appreciate that, they've done a good job. So what I'm recommending is approving the MDM purchase either out of this current budget year through budget amendment, or funding it in the fiscal year 2026 budget. Approve my operating budget for 2026 that I'm recommending, approve financing for my five-year capital plan, approve a 3% rate increase with manual monthly PCA balancing for uncollected power supply costs. An alternative to that would be approving a four and a half percent rate increase with the current PCA restrictions. Support annual rate reviews, just like we're doing now, and consideration towards annual adjustments. And once again, consider targeting minimum cash balances of 120 days cash on hand. Next slide. Just to give you a little insight into the customer experience and what they may be seeing, and before I go there, just our retail rate trends. You can see back in 2014, at the bottom of the graph, rates were just under 15 cents. And if you go to 2026, and you use the four and a half percent rate increase method, group just over that now, 11 years later, that's been great for our customers to experience those lower power costs during those years, but as a result, to achieve that, we've had to spend down our cash and put off our capital investments. Next slide. This is the same information, just expressed by total cost. So back in 2014, our customers were seeing a bill really close to $150 a month for electric, and now they're going to be just slightly under $150 per month in 2026, 11 years later. And again, that difference between the two is we've drawn down our cash to keep those rates down. Next slide. Using the four and a half percent rate increase method, here's a, here's a comparison of what the competition looks like, just simply benchmarking, without saying, saying it's right or wrong, which is where we're at with regards to our competitors. They're at 16 cents per kilowatt hour now, we're at 14. Going through with this recommendation, we take our customers right around to 15 cents per kilowatt hour. Duke's has approved rate increases for next year that push the customers to 17, and you can track that all, all the way out, we still lag.
Charlie Duke, just a couple months ago, did a rate reduction. Do you know what that was about?
I think that was Carolinas. And when they, some, you have to be careful when we read announcements on that as well. They call, I think, add or subtract writers, or other billing components to your bill. They bundle that into the total cost, and they say a rate decrease or a rate increase. It's not a rate, it's what you're experiencing. And this is what we, what we have mapped here, is what we can see that Duke has approved by the public utility condition. And then the next slide, it's, I'm showing the same information, I'm just expressing it differently. Right now, our customers are at about $143 per month, Duke's customers are about $157 for the average retail customer. You use more energy, you have a bigger house, you've got more things going on, you like it warmer, you like it colder, it's going to be reflective. This is what the average customer sees, and what we're proposing, using the four and a half percent method, is about a $7 increase per month. Customers would go to about $150, where Duke's customers are expected to be around $163. And you can follow that all the way out to 2028, where we would expect to be around $163 per month for our customers, if this rate cap continues. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
I'd like to go back to when you began. You talked about the new billing format.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, what would be the potential costs that would be reflected in changing?
It's included in our migration to our new billing service provider, and it's budgeted in this year's budget. We're not paying it. We have the option, either when this conversion's done, we're either going to stay with the same format, or they're going to enhance our format, and we've chosen to try to get some enhancements out of it, because it doesn't change the cost.
In addition to that, you talked about the texting notifications. Will there be any, you're talking about customers who may not have access to the texting information or not subscribe to it? Is there any language on the billing that will instruct customers how they can sign on to the text notification?
That's great, I can certainly add that, we can talk about it. If you look at the new bill under the messaging, we could possibly add it there, or maybe give them a QR, use that QR code section, so some notifications about texting capabilities. Yes, ma'am.
I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and I'm sure with the numbers that people dial and constant, trying to, constantly trying to access the department, that this text messaging would be great for staff.
It has been very, very helpful, we can connect directly to our customer.
Thank you.
And Charlie, the information you have on, on the phone numbers that's based on when the customer signed up for the, for the bill, that's, that's the phone number you're using to reach out, correct?
Or as often as we can get them to come in and update it. And we just discovered, about two or three months ago, maybe, a way to add an additional phone number. It was set up for just a primary phone number, but as most of you know, there's several primaries living in the house, so I, I want my wife to get the text just as I get the text. So we've been able to resolve that, so we're able to add more phone numbers as authorized by the company.
So Charlie, what is the required number of days that you feel that you should keep on hand? I know you're standing here at 120, but what is the?
Our policy is 90. And that's great. I can't be more, what I hear from the industry experts saying, you know, at least 120, and I think, as I make my rounds in the industry, I hear days cash on hand even higher than that. But step one, let's get to 90, step two, let's think we can do better.
Well, I mean, as I said before, you know, you come for us each year and you tell us what's needed, and, you know, you're the expertise here, this is your field, and I have no problem with what you have recommended. I mean, if it's going, we need, we need our power, we need our water, and these are basic, these are essential services for our citizens, so I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the 4.5 and the 3%.
Thank you for your support.
It's needed.
Yes, ma'am. Any other thoughts, your questions, discussion? Thank you for the opportunity to talk about what keeps moving ahead.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Thank you.
We're interested in taking a break. Give us an opportunity to reset the temperature and adjust the technology all we can, until we've got some refreshments in the.
Let's, let's take a recess until 10:30. Okay, we will get started back again, and Mr. Hughes, I'm heading over to you.
Okay, so on March 28th of this year, your budget books were available, and so you've had some time to be able to look through those things, so now as part of the budget process, we're going to start looking through that. I'm going to ask Tanya to go through just to navigate as we're working through the rest of the day.
All right. So if you've got your budget book in front of you, just explaining how it's, it's broken down, in the beginning, of course, the introduction, that and specificity, manager's message. Following that is the budget summary. In that section, you'll find the budget and financial report, staffing and positions, dues and subscriptions, travel and training, capital summary, and then the schedule of fees and charges. Following that summary section, goes into each of the funds, starting with the general fund, and then into the, into the enterprise funds. In each of those areas, we have the, at the beginning, the revenue and expenditure summaries, followed by revenue detail, and then after each of those, the department budget highlights and each department expenditure detail. After that is the other funds, that would be MSD, that employee benefits, and then the special revenue funds in that section. And the last tab in your book is glossary and acronyms. We have a lot of acronyms, especially in like the dues and subscriptions and travel and training areas, so in the acronym section, that explains where each of those are. Any questions on the book so far? So to get down into a little bit more of the detailed budget comparison reports on each of the departments, this is what the budget comparison reports look like. I've highlighted and read the circled areas, so that first row across the top, those are your column titles. That's the accounts, and then each of the expenditures. First one is the fiscal year 24, the actuals for the whole year.
To follow along, you could pick page 120 to kind of look at it, so you can follow along what she's referring to. Sorry.
Thank you. This is a good idea. So 2025, those are our actuals from the date that we repolled, the last time we pulled these reports to print, and that was on March 25th. Then it's the current year revised budget for fiscal year 25. That next column, that's the fiscal year 26, manager's recommended budget. And then that last column is the percent change. In the lighter blue, that just is like the, what you see, those are the divisions, so let's say for finance, we've got accounting and purchasing and warehouse. So under finance, you'll see each of those divisions, and you'll have that summary. The green row, those are our character codes, and that's what's used to categorize the accounts by that, by certain categories. So 61 is personnel services, so salaries, anything that starts with 62, those are benefits for employees. And then there's each of those categories after that, 71, professional services, my current obligations, so, and there's a summary or a total for each of those sections. For the blue, or the white area for number four, just want to point out that in each of these, the account number is listed first or above the description of the account. I think it's kind of reversed of what we're used to, we're used to seeing the name first and then the numbers, but in this report, it pulls the account number first, so those lines follow across and show the totals for each of those areas, and the description is below that. And the last thing I wanted to point out was, the percent change in that last column, that is the percent change from the revised current year budget, not the adopted budget, and what is being proposed for fiscal year 26. Any questions on the detailed reports? Thank you.
The fiscal year 26 budget of revenues to $165,840,915 for all annual funds. General fund consisting of 32% in the amount of $52,630,306. Combined utilities account for 61% in the amount of $101,566, with water fund at 8% in the amount of $13,490, sewer fund at 9% in the amount of $14,275,629, electric fund at 41% in the amount of $68,651,475, and solid waste fund at 3% in the amount of $5,836,000. Other funds at 7% in the amount of $11,799,923. Those consist of the employee benefits fund, which makes up about 10.4 billion of that. Other funds also include various special revenue funds consisting of redevelopment commission, metropolitan organization, the emergency 911, and department of justice and special investment funds.
So that's the pie of anticipated revenue for the entire city, now general fund, we'll talk about that shortly. Enterprise funds, those funds have to, have to generate their own revenues for that, but this is how we slice the pie. We've only got so much to go around, so just so you understand that as we continue to move forward.
This provides pretty much the same information as before, but this is in page 11 of your budget book, it shows the comparison of the FY '25 adaptive budget and the proposed FY '26 budget for each fund, reflecting the change from year to year as a percentage. The change from FY '25 adaptive budget for the general fund is 7%, water being 5.3%, sewer 6.3%, electric fund 6.1%, and solid waste fund for 8%. Other funds combined is 23%, so the overall total of 7.4% for all city annual funds.
Excuse me, Ken, what page are you on?
Well, this is the, this, this is also on page 11. It's similar, so it's broken down a little bit more.
Okay, so before we get into the enterprise funds, we're going to look at the first of the book, we're going to talk a little bit about staffing and positions, dues and subscriptions, travel and training, and capital, then we'll come to the enterprise fund. So if you're looking at page 19 of the book, you can set what you get there, this is right after the staffing tab. So the city at current has 500 free-bought positions, and through the budget process, department head has recommended 17 new positions, for a variety of reasons, and a lot of those which we'll talk about shortly. I can only recommend eight new positions and a reclassification of a part-time position in this budget. There are six reclassifications that we're also going to be proposing, and so we're going to go down the list of proposed new positions, I'm going to ask the department head, if it's effective, to come up and make some comments about why. I'm going to ask the department head, the detective, to come up and make some comments about why they feel they need that position. Then we're going to move forward. If you have any questions during this, please, please let us know. So on page nineteen, the first position request was in technology for the administrative assistant. Ernest, can you come up and make some comments about your request?
Good morning. Basically, the request is so that, excuse me, we could focus more on the administrative tasks that are part of the department. Right now, we spend a little amount of our time away from the technical part of the job that we need to do to support the administrative things. So whether it's purchasing, whether it's managing invoices, whether it's chasing down all the administrative things, that's really what that position would be for.
So the technology department has not had an admin technician previously in that position. Any questions for Ernest? Where, where would that person be located? Right now, technology is located in city hall on third floor, and that position would be based upstairs on third floor. Could that person work on the main floor, say, if they're doing admin work?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. The next recommended position is assistant director for finance. Kim?
What about the next one?
I didn't recommend it. I'm all, we're going to go.
Okay.
Mine might cover all of them and explain them. But so I requested two new positions, the assistant director of finance and administrative assistant. And then they, sorry, and then administrative assistant. One current position is to be reclassified as an accounting and audit coordinator. I've given this request a great amount of thought. Coming on, on board a few years ago, our department was, had substantial challenges to overcome, including staffing shortages and significant insufficiencies. Along with implementing several new accounting standards and a significant amount of backlog. We have since implemented efficiencies within our department and streamlined our departmental processes and are no longer running a backlog. However, some staff are still regularly working more than their scheduled hours to meet the demands of the day-to-day activities of the job, making it difficult for a healthy work-life balance. Over the past year, we have been able to assess and identify department needs that will improve and support the health and stability of the department in the long term. The assistant finance director position will provide additional oversight to ensure the city maintains fiscal compliance with financial regulations and city policies, assist with prepping or preparing and analyzing financial reports, develop and oversee internal audit processes, and provide expertise and support to staff in our city departments. Ideally, this position will be key in succession planning to ensure a smooth transition and continuity in the finance department. The administrative assistant position has been built through a third-party agency, although it's not been approved in the budget this year. It is difficult to keep that position as a temp position as they do want stability and be hired within. The reclassification of an accounting tech two to an accounting and audit coordinator is greatly needed. We are currently reorganizing and trying to provide an opportunity for career progression. This position would support staff growth and the department reorganization plan. We researched staffing, compared the number of positions to the general fund and utility fund operating budgets for twenty municipalities, which included ten electric cities. Every municipality except for the city of New Bern has at least one assistant finance director or deputy finance director. Half of those municipalities are either the same size or smaller than the city of New Bern with populations of thirty-three thousand, four hundred or less. Comparing all twenty municipalities, the average budget per finance position was seven point five million dollars. Looking at municipalities with a population of thirty thousand to thirty-six thousand, which was three thousand, now over ten of New Bern, the data shows an average of seven point two budget dollars per position. Looking at only electric cities, the average was eight million of budget dollars per position. New Bern is over eleven million of budget dollars per finance position. This means we have less people that are managing more money than compare to their cities. Comparing budgets with positions within ten million dollars of the city of New Bern's total operating budgets, the average was seventeen funded positions. New Bern has fourteen funded finance positions. Lastly, in two thousand eighteen nineteen, the finance firm had thirteen positions. Seven years later, we have fourteen positions and an increase of forty million dollars in operating budgets. This does not include grants and project funds. That's why I'm requesting those positions.
Okay, so just to be clear, your recommendation on assistant finance director, I did make that. I did not make one on the administrative assistant. She has a career progression to accountant and audit coordinator. And that would basically be reclassifying one position. So that would actually be the person who's currently in that position. I believe there are three or four in that current position who would be promoted if that is approved. The next department is development services.
Excuse me a second.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. So, Kim, you currently have fourteen employees, and you want to add on one. Okay, so my question to you is, what responsibilities do your accounting manager have that you would need an assistant director?
Our accounting manager oversees overall general ledger, the audit, and is really into the details of the transactions that are happening throughout the general ledger with them, and helping staff oversee the joint operations and such. So the assistant finance director would be at more of a higher level, managing some internal auditing so that we have a, definitely a lot smoother audit process. I honestly, I kind of looked through and looked at my hours that I have worked over the last several years. And last year, I had given an additional, where was it, one hundred and thirty days? Or two hundred and sixty days, when you take the amount of hours that I put in last year, was a hundred and thirty extra days. Hundred and ten, I'm sorry, that's two years, so a hundred and ten last year extra days, and I think a hundred and fifty extra days the prior year. I work a lot, and I just, it's not feasible to continue. I understood it. I knew it when I took the job on at the time. But it's not, now that we're running effi, more efficiently, I mean, there's still all these efficiencies. But now that we're running more efficiently and we have our day-to-day tasks, we're not held up with a ton of backlog. We've implemented several things within the unit system that were not implemented before to help, you know, make things more electronic. And I'm still working those hours, so.
Well, I just, I, with the salary that is proposed here to bring in this assistant director, I could see that as being replaced with two full-time senior accountants.
That is, oh, yeah, okay. Sorry, I was looking at it, the salary of a hundred and nine, that, that falls within the, yes, I could, I mean, I, I do see what you're saying. But the level of experience that we need would be more than an accountant or senior accountant experience.
Okay, so your budget administrator only is, is a senior accountant, but they actually just specifically perform duties of the budget? Or is it their overall train, cross-trained to cover more responsibilities and job duties within your department?
The budget administrator currently does oversee the revenue, the budget, the, for both, all of our, our funds. Do you want to share more?
A lot of it specifically during periods of, you know, a lot more time is spent on the budget during certain times of the year. But throughout the year, yeah, it's the tax revenue, all the revenue. I do share responsibility for all the account receivables. And so, and the budgeting does take up, you know, it's something that is not only for the first, you know, for these few years or a few months when we are really getting into it, but it is a continual process. But there are other duties that I'm responsible for.
We kicked off this back in November, is when we first picked it off. And honestly, we should back it up. Even just as soon as we wrap this up, we should be looking at FY twenty-seven already and start that planning process. And if the goal is to be able to do multi-year budgeting as well, which takes up, you know, quite a bit of time, and then adding, implementing one of the modules within the budget program.
All right, thank you.
I agree with all the guests that you hire two other people to probably come in and do the same thing. If everybody is actually looking at and cross-trained to do this year from year to year, you would have the experience already there, instead of adding on this other big cost for one person. And you can actually hire two people for the cost of one to do the same thing. You know, therefore, we won't have the glitches that we've been having in finance. I mean, those are the things that I think that we need to really consider more so than anything else, to get rid of the glitches first. And then we can look at other avenues. But right now, we have a lot of glitches that we need to correct. And then putting the people in place to be cross-trained as well as get the job done right. I disagree with all of the guests.
All the way, you can see every staff in every position except for mine, and people are cross-trained. We have cross-training that's happened. That was our focus over the last year. So we have multiple people that can process payroll, multiple people that can process accounts payable, grants, bank, you know, banking, that kind of stuff. Everything has happened, all that cross-training, assets, all of that has happened in my department. We need somebody at a higher level than, a higher level of experience than the transactional level for, that you find in accounting managers or senior colleagues.
I thought we had all of that in place. You know, it's like I said, the glitches, we've been having a lot of different glitches in, in, in finance. So when are we going to correct that and get that together? That's just my, that's my take.
Can I ask what glitches you're referring to?
Tuesday night one, that was a big one, Tuesday night at the meeting. We spoke to have, you know, we supposed to went over the budget, but we did not because it wasn't advertised. That's a big glitch for the state. That's a state law. Is it not? To miss something that big, I mean, I don't know. You tell me.
We bumped everything. I will skip on that. We had bumped the calendar back so that we could put that in there. In the past, that has happened on the same day before. So I do agree that was an oversight, but that's why we, we need in our department, somebody to help at that level.
So what you're saying, that we don't have nobody at that level to run finance? Is that what you're saying to me?
You have one person, one person at that level to run a lot of money and a lot of responsibilities and oversee quite a bit. And so I, I, I'm just saying, with the amount of time that I put in, it's not a healthy work-life balance.
So we need someone that can do the job, basically, is what you're saying to me. I'm just thinking out of the box for myself.
I need help, I need help sharing responsibilities, is what I'm asking.
So the board needs to sit down and speak with the manager to find out what we're missing and what type of person we need to hire to come in to operate on a day-to-day basis. That's just my take of that.
And we're going to have board discussions on, on, on finance staff in a later time as well, so.
Mr. Hughes, how many department heads do you currently have?
Well, if I look at, maybe, if I'm off the top of my head.
Maybe, how many of them have assistant directors? Do you know, do you know, did you know?
Tanya, you may be able to help me on this. I'm sorry, why?
I think everybody. Tanya?
Development Services, Human Resources.
And Public Works.
And Public Works currently have, those three departments currently have assistant directors.
Going back to Bobby's question, are all of these things necessary? Is it necessary to get the job done? I mean, I'm just thinking out of the box, you know. I don't have the experience that everybody else on the board have, but still, we need to look at the bottom line and what you're bringing in. Because at five years from now, you could say, well, we don't have enough experience to operate this way here. So now we need another deputy to come in to help to execute, expedite where we're going because we are growing year to year.
Well, I can say this, and I only want, the only thing that I can speak of is when we're doing FEMA work. I know that it's a tremendous amount of work for staff to do the FEMA work for reimbursements. And I know that the director is heavily involved in that, overseeing that. Because most of the time, the city manager, I, or one of us, asked it to make sure that everything is being done correctly. Everything that goes through there has to run through the assistant director. I, I agree that she needs some help. She worked a hundred and thirty extra days last year, a hundred and thirty extra days. So I agree that she needs some of the help. And hiring two to replace one is not the skill level that she needs. She needs, she needs someone that can be in charge when she walks out the door. Someone like Marvin when the city manager walks out the door. So it's, I agree that she, she needs an assistant. She's, I've seen it. I've seen her work hard up there. I've seen everything that goes on up there has to go across to her and be approved by her, or at least her not being knowledgeable of it. And I just, I just think it's probably time. How many finance directors did you survey?
We.
And how many of them have assistant directors?
It was twenty municipalities. In every municipality except for the city of New Bern had an assistant finance director.
I have a question. Did you say you already have a temp in acting as assistant director?
No, a temp, a temp is filling an administrative assistant, sort of like a project coordinator role.
And if the assistant finance director is hired, would that be in-house?
Yeah.
In-house. Okay. And the other question I have with the promotion.
Reclassification.
Reclassification, that would be a promotion for that individual.
So, Kim, let, let, let me make this statement because I don't want anyone to think that I am delivering anybody's job duties. Okay? When, when you came in, you came in as, you was a what, senior accountant? What, did you come in as a county manager when you first started with the city?
Yes, when I first started with the city, I came in as a senior accountant, and I planned on staying very short-term. I was just getting down here to New Bern, to be honest with you. Because I came in at a much higher level, or worked at a much higher level where I worked before.
Exactly. I see, that's my point. I, I know that there are some accountants out there, senior accountants, that have the, the job, the same job that you come in, you took as a county man, as the director of finance, that have that experience, can come in as a senior accountant and work their way up, just like you did. You have, but you have the knowledge, and they may have the knowledge. I just see as two individuals coming in to that department that can aid you and your county manager. Because you're the county manager, correct?
No.
Is that Helen?
Helen's the county.
Okay, Helen's the county manager. So I, I just see that, that two more, two more wicker bees coming into your department, I just think would, would suffice for as disposition is considered, as we consider, you know, disposition as an assistant director.
I hear you, but the, the responsibilities that fall under a senior accountant or an accounting manager are not the same responsibilities than assistant finance director would have or that finance director has. So if you bring somebody in, I mean, I'll just give an example, that's why I was planning on leaving. I'm not going to, you know, back then, because I wasn't going to do the work at a higher level, higher functioning level and get paid a senior accountant. I mean, that's, that's not quite fair. at a higher level, higher functioning level and get paid a senior accountant. I mean, that's, that's not quite fair.
That's, maybe that's our problem. Then we need to pay these people that come in with the expert and the knowledge and all of that. We need to pay them.
But they're, they're very different res...
I know they're different responsibilities. I get you. I know that 100%, but I just look at you, how you came in and the job that you was in and now where you're at now. So I, but thank you, thank you for your information.
What's your thought?
I know you recommended it, so.
I, I did recommend it. And I think, you know, in, in the finance department, they're all extremely analytical and that's exactly what we need in that department. You know, we're looking at an overall 156 million dollar budget. So that is not what it was five years ago, 10 years ago. So no one, no one disagrees with the fact that that department stays quite busy. They're responsible for managing, overseeing the grants, making sure accounts are payable or taken care of, all of the reporting has to be done. So it's very important, everything that every one of those employees do in, in that department. So I guess I do support someone that can be on a higher level and to assist with those functions.
I have a quick question. All the the position that is being filled by temp help now, which, which one is that?
It's an administrative assistant position, kind of working more like a project coordinator.
So the request is to replace a temp position with a full-time position?
That's what the request that I got.
So on page 120, under temp help services, is that what is being replaced if this is a, the new position is approved?
The, now I'm not recommending her for administrative assistant position. If you look on this, the gray shaded out or what I have not recommended?
I'm not recommending.
Yeah, I know, but this is my question. If, well, I'll go ahead and ask this other question too. The, where, where do the cost benefits come from in relation to the salaries? That's, that's on these new proposals.
There's a formula that we use that averages out to about 40%, but it is based on, we plug in the proposed salary and they'll calculate. It, it will vary for each one because some of them are flat rates, some of them are percentages of the benefits.
So the, the admin position, is that the one that's 45,000 proposed hour that you wanted that wasn't approved?
Yes.
And it says the total cost of benefits would be 72. And we've got budgeted 68,000, 67.6 for temp help. Is that, is that equal?
That's true. There's, that's not the temp help I don't think was fully earned because we've had some months where we've had somebody in that role. And it's just one time.
So I guess that's my question. It's really for you, Paul, from a manager's standpoint. If we're paying 67,000 for temp and you can get a full-time staff for 70, is there a reason why we wouldn't do that?
No, and as we get into that budget, definitely they'd go.
Okay, and then the, we can talk about it when George comes up, but 67 and 76% benefits for a couple of these positions, that seems awfully high for me. I guess it's George's one coming up next.
He will be, just saying. So on page 21, we did have a reclassification request and that's in Development Services for office assistant three to a permitting technician. Jess, if you'd like to make a few comments about, about that.
This is just a request to modernize something that has been a legacy position. A young lady that works in our department currently, when we were recruiting her, I realized we have always called the person in that role a permitting technician. But on paper, it was a little too late last year when our last permitting technician departed to get this updated. And so we are requesting to name the physician what it actually is. A permitting technician does slightly more technical work than an assistant does. Every, every permit that gets issued out of our office is done so connected, in connection with a state law or a locally adopted law and they need to have more knowledge than just an assistant typically does. So they're doing slightly more technical work. Also, when permits, when they get issued in error, that can cause a lot of problems. So we want to make sure that we've got a person in there that's, that's qualified to do that. The state also keeps throwing around legislation that would require permitting technicians to have a certification. And I anticipate that's going to be adopted at some point in the next year or two. So that just really supports the fact that this position is a little bit higher and needs to be renamed and compensated as such.
Any questions on that?
So you said you previously had a permitting technician?
We, we've always had a person in that role, but they have never been called a permitting technician. I'm asking to call it a permitting technician rather than an assistant.
Along with a pay increase?
Slightly yes, because of the technical work associated with permitting and the connection to the state law and the knowledge they need to have to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so what permitting, our current permitting technician, if they've been certified?
Uh, no, I guess.
And so that's part of us being permitting technician. They would go through that certification as well, which...
Yes, and they're also required to take courses at community college to have the knowledge in line of administration to issue.
So the next admin, we're, we're working with, with a consultant on, a request with me for a building inspector level three to be, be upgraded. And so we're actually, we're going to consult on that. So we should have that information completed. We have the department's recommendation, but we wanted the consultant to chime in on that. So we'll have that for our next meeting. Now, Public Works, George, if you'll come up, we've got several positions that Public Works recommended and I've included that in my recommendations. And, sure, if you'd like to.
I, I would like to answer the mayor's question on the benefits, why it's so high for this. So the positions that are lower grades, lower salaries, the, the greatest benefit cost is our health insurance. So right now, this current year, it's 12,500 per employee. And I might be jumping down a little bit, but we are proposing an increase in that because of the actual costs of insurance, up to 14,500. So when somebody's got a high of salary, you know, that flat rate is going to be a lower percentage. But when we're talking about a salary of, you know, 30 some thousand, it is a huge percent of, of those benefits. And the other benefits are, you know, the social security, Medicare, retirement.
So 12,500, that's for every employee?
Per employee, per year.
We pay that regardless of what claims. That's not the actual cost that we out-of-pocket grow.
Right, so all of those are actual transfers into the employee benefit fund to cover the cost.
Thank you. All right, so the first position is in Public Works as a custodian upgrade from seasonal to full-time. I'll just make one comment on this proposal. This position is currently funded by Public Works. And what we're proposing to do is take 50% of the funding to the full-time status and pull that from MSD. This, this custodian works actually out of City Hall. But they would also have additional responsibilities moving forward if this is approved to be working on the streets of the MSD to pick up any trash and things like that, patrol and monitoring during the day. So George, I'll let you add anything else you'd like to.
All right, follow-up on what the city manager said. Apparently, this is a seasonal position, but we're already finding that it's exceeding the 1,000 hours that we can use for the seasonal to at least maintain the current functions and responsibilities of this position. And with consideration of us adding on the annex to City Hall and some additional responsibilities downtown, we feel it would be better served by a full-time position and then to follow with, with some additional responsibilities in the downtown area, in the MSD district.
All right, I have a question. You're, you're saying that the person that cleans City Hall and the cup house is working more than 20 hours a week?
No, they're, they're basically working half-time, part-time employees.
Or that would be not 20 hours.
Yeah, but 20 hours.
And we think that we can add another workload to double what they're doing there?
Yes, because they would actually be going out in the streets of downtown to be taking care of some issues there. They'd also be maintaining the fountain moving forward and some, you don't want to chime in on anything else.
And then the MSD district, I'm putting in a ton of responsibilities, so, so that would also add to the hours that would be kind of served.
So, so this person would ultimately be responsible for downtown City Hall and Cup House? That may be doing any other stomachs?
And then the MSD area downtown, so sidewalks picking up trash, anything like that.
I got that. So they would be responsible for any other areas of the city or as other?
No, ma'am, but a lot of the other funding came from MSD directly. That would restrict their, their bound for what they're doing.
Okay, so these, you're saying this would be coming from the MSD?
Half, half of it if we transition from the seasonal, which currently is kind of that, to a, a full-time position and half of that funding would come from MSD.
Thank you.
George, would this person also be responsible for cleaning like the restroom and cleaning up down like Indian Point Farm?
Currently, those are serviced by launch and rec staff to facilitate.
Like curb, yes. And how about when the, we get the restrooms in the area down around the pier, would that also fall under this person? Over that because it's the MSD area?
Yeah, I mean, being the MSD, so some of that cleaned up would be in that zone.
So George, what we currently have is custodians for our other city buildings?
Most of that is contracted right now for our city.
So why wouldn't we contract this one?
I think the needs of City Hall is a little bit different than our current, uh, department office buildings. And that, that kind of would facilitate, yeah, board meetings, other staff, additional things that go on at these facilities that we need, something more than overnight cleaning of City Hall.
Question. If a large focus is what would be the MSD footprint, instead of MSD paying half, why cannot they absorb the whole cost?
Well, currently, this position fulfills the duties at City Hall. That's really not in charge of the MSD particularly. But that's a tool that we're, over the entire city.
So the proposed salary is 31.2? With benefits, it'll be 55, a low of 55?
Yes, ma'am.
So the city will pay half and MSD will pay their half?
That was, that's the recommendation, yes, ma'am.
And, but as far as the city is concerned, we're just getting the cup house and the City Hall serviced?
Directly from the general fund, yes, ma'am. And then the MSD stuff, there would be benefits to downtown, but it's within the MSD corridor that when you have somebody walking around just picking up trash or just dealing with things in that area on the sidewalks in the MSD, we don't provide that service directly every day to the rest of the town. So MSD would be the one responsible for that funding.
Who paid for it the last time when we had Perry picking the streets and helping the garbage cans? Who paid for that?
That was coming out of Public Works.
So why doesn't it use MSD for?
Well, as, as Perry transitions to seasonal or part-time, the need in the east downtown has, has transitioned and we need a full-time person.
Because we get ready to change, we get ready to go from two, two meetings and move to one. So it's not going to be a lot cleaning there.
Correct, but we also added the annex to the City, to City Hall. There's additional square footage in the building to, to deal with that.
Okay.
And, and hiring pieces of the cup house.
So currently, City Hall is being contracted out?
No, ma'am. Currently, the seasonal, the seasonal jam tours coming out right now.
Any other questions on that position?
I'm just, well, we can move on, but it, I just don't, I think it would be more efficient if you're outside and had somebody come in and do that cleaning myself. I mean, I'm walking through the City Hall. Sometimes I can't tell if they've been cleaned or not. That's just me. It's the board's decision.
I agree. Outside contracting would be better.
I mean, I would at least like to see a proposal. I mean, I, I understand picking up trash on the street and that sort of thing. And that could be something that MSD, maybe MSD hires a part-time person just like they hire a parking attendants. But to have a full-time custodian who calls the extra square footage of City Hall, you could probably contract that out and have a company come in and do that cleaning in about a few hours a week. That's just me.
Can you check on a proposal for doing something like that? Just to give us, and those, give us a feedback?
It's your thing. All right, George, continue.
Moving on to this streets. We have three positions for the streets division. One would be an equipment operator one with two maintenance construction workers so we can create new crews currently. The asphalt crew is supplementing staff to run the loose meat from November to February. And that leaves us with a long lag of asphalt repairs from laborers who work for us on the degradation of the road for four month period where we just don't have the staff to run the asphalt repairs efficiently. And as, as the mileage of roads continues to grow, that will be continued, continued issue. This would also allow us for, to have a dedicated crew to do sidewalk, uh, vegetation maintenance, and edging and cleaning up sidewalks. And that would also include anything within the right way. So with the, the ability to address some of the smaller drainage issues as they go through the right way where there's roadside over or an inlet that's just got leaves in front of it, they can address those as they're working their way through town. We also have two positions for two additional construction maintenance workers through, through stormwater. Currently, we have 180 miles of road. We've got to figure that most roads are serviced either by roadside ditch or a culprit system. So as we expand the road, the road area, there's always a need for additional, additional people to address these issues. Currently, we're finding we're not, we're not able to get to things or be in front of problems that could be aggressive or strange or maintenance, just leads to the linear footage of, of areas we have to cover.
How many men do you have that's on that?
Five, they're five currently working that are in the field every day. And they, when we get into this, you know, we've got a backer truck which I wouldn't like it to be on the road anymore. You know, we get two, two additional construction, construction maintenance workers that would allow for us to have an equipment operator that can be a little bit dedicated to running the backer, cleaning out boxes and pipes. And if these are just maintenance lights, that keeps, keeps us ahead of a problem that would back up the drainage system.
So you see us five men on the field?
That, that would be addition to the six man crew that they have that runs after this.
How often do you have the two guys from other, from other TCHs to come in to back up?
Well, they, they, they cross help each other, but a lot of times it's either trucks or, or excavators depending on the size of the job that they're doing. And that usually comes from the streets division that, that one. And then the last position, this would follow the solid, solid waste area rise point. We're requesting for an office assistant three. The county doesn't have anybody who's working in that role. Currently, our office administrative group of works and the administrative assistant have been handling these duties. We did an exercise over eight months where they tracked phone calls and emails related to solid waste. And they received over 2,600 that they had to deal with that were just solid waste related. And they received over twenty-six hundred that they had to deal with that were just solid waste-related contacts. So it's consuming a large amount of time where these two people are dedicated to other responsibilities for the rest of the department. And we think community and our department will serve that field position as, as number of customers grow. You know, the ability to contact us is easier through emails or, or phone calls.
George, how many people work in this solid waste department?
Solid waste right now?
How many supervisors, I reckon I'd say that would utilize a administrative assistant staff?
Really, really just one, just, yes. And so that, that would be for all of them, setting up cams. We take a lot of funding calls related to actually county recycling that we have to redirect if people want to answer questions. Loose leak funding calls come in, vegetative debris, brown goods, white goods, all of these things are associated with solid waste.
I reckon with my question, and certainly, oh, I reckon it'd be a few, but administrative assistants. So it pays like forty-five thousand? And you're currently asking for thirty-eight? I'm wondering if you took one, but you have two administrative assistants or just one?
Currently, we have one in office administrative three, which is, is Bill Rose who handles our insurance and also the work orders and phone calls for the department. And the area involved with it is the office, the office administrator right now for private.
I think my, I reckon my question was if we, instead of hiring a new position, if we change one of your office assistants. Positions into an administrative assistant position to handle that extra, that load with that?
Our admin group currently also handles all of our insurance. So it's under her, so we, we have assisted in delegation outside of what their primary role is to facilitate solid waste. And we just don't have the capacity to continue to do that.
Yeah, and I do know, I can concur with you for the need for that position because those two young ladies work.
They really do.
And I can say this so much, when I call that department, somebody always answers the phone and assists me and customers. Our citizens, because they do very well.
Yes, they do.
All right, so I think that's all of what we're recommending on these positions and I'd like to get any directions from the board if there are any positions that you do not support. Or any which you do support, I'd like to get that now so we can make any adjustments needed.
I'll speak first on the later process. I recommend, I have a problem with the IT recommendation. I don't have, I do have a problem with finance recommendation of the full-time. I just think that if you need that help, you need to hire in two other people. Development Services, I concur with both of those recommendations by Development Services. And I don't agree to the cup that works towards the upgrade to, of the seasonal to full-time for the custodian. I don't agree with that. And I do agree with George with his recommendations for the positions that he is requesting. Because I tell you right now, with the stormwater and this maintenance and upkeep sidewalks, that's a big job. And I just think that we need to have staff in place that can handle those problems for our customers when they call and need assistance.
Anyone else?
I've been agreeing with Ms. Stace.
Yeah, I mean, only one of this was questioned that I heard was really that I disagreed with is I, I think we need to look at the assistant director's position. Any, any director that works a hundred and thirty days above her normal work schedule is definitely in line for some help.
Go to someone else and come back to me if you would.
So I'll ask a question. Can you, can you share with us the city population change over the past several years? And how that relates to staffing and head count? So we were four hundred and seventy-some odd employees in two thousand fourteen and in two thousand twenty-four, we were at five.
Currently, five, five to three and social is five eleven. So we actually went back to two thousand ten, uh, two thousand ten was not a great year because of the economy was really tanking and started to recover at that time. But we did do some, some numbers. In two thousand ten, the city had five hundred fifty-four employees. Of course, that started being reduced. And you mentioned two thousand fourteen, I think that's when it got down to that number. Tax rate in two thousand ten, a penny, the value was two hundred thirty-four thousand. That's doubled down to five hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred. Population growth in that time, currently our population is twenty twenty-three, is recognized as thirty-three thousand seven hundred fifty-eight. So we've seen a fourteen point three percent increase in our population over that time. In the fifteen years or fourteen years, we've seen a total of net new housing units in the amount of four thousand one hundred and two. And our square miles have grown from twenty-eight point seventy-one to thirty point thirty-seven. Now, we have not done, we have not had a consultant come in and analyze based on what the city's operations are with what we have with electric utility. But we have not done an analysis on similar sized cities, the city with what we're offering and what our comparables offering, what the staff sizes. We've not done that yet.
Okay. I'm okay with the IT assistant if they can man the desk, front desk of city hall, if they can work from that position. So if somebody walks in city hall, which somebody there to greet him and direct him, that's not the clerk. You've recommended the finance, assistant finance director, and you've cut down on a lot of other positions that were requested. So I'll trust your judgment on that since you've worked there a lot closer than I do. The custodian, I've already stated my stance on that. The one I have a little bit of concern with is the, the stormwater and street crew. We just went through all that FEMA work to do this and clean these ditches out, which was somewhat, I'll just say personally disappointing. I thought we would have gotten more out of that process, but. I would, I would, I would be okay if we feel like we're going to see some tangible benefits from that. And be more proactive versus reacting on that because it seems to be, the excuse has been, or the justification in the past has been, we're reactive because we don't have staff. So if we had staff, we need to be proactive. If not, the board can take it away next year.
Yes, to technology. Yes, to development services. Yes, to public works.
Okay, so what I'm seeing just on the poll and then in terms of majority, no support for the custodian. No support and no overall support for the city finance director.
I don't, I thought the custodian thing you was, you were going to actually check to see if he can.
Well, yeah, we are, we are. On the poll, we didn't, we didn't see support for that. All right. All right, so moving forward, we're going to get to dues and subscriptions. This is on page twenty-seven. On page twenty-seven, this lists total dues and subscriptions citywide, total amount is two hundred forty-one thousand six hundred sixteen dollars. Now, this represents a twenty-one percent decrease over the current year, which was three hundred and seventy thousand five hundred eleven dollars. But if we're taking on to look through that again, any questions, you're happy to answer that. There's not a comparison in this list to prior year. Were there any significant changes that you know of?
The main changes we saw, we saw some, some fees and charts, some dues and subscriptions increased some, and then some, some departments chose to just do a win-up membership. So that's why we see this net decrease in that.
The one I'd really like to ask Charlie is the ninety-three thousand dollars for membership of, of electric cities, what do we get out of that? But you don't have to come up already now. Any other questions or comments on dues and subscriptions? All right, our next one starts on page thirty-one. This is employee travel and training. Total travel and training citywide, the budget's five hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars. This represents a thirteen percent increase over our current year, which is a budget of four hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars. This increase is also reflected in staff needing to maintain certifications that they were not able to receive in the last budget year. I haven't answered any questions you may have regarding that.
Has, also has, has anyone gone, have you or your, your staff designated person outgone through this? See if some of these, this travel training is, is necessary for some of the employees?
We did that as part of the budget process on at least two different strikes. We gave the departments the opportunity, department heads the opportunity to go through and make cuts. But yes, we, we went through that twice during our budget process.
So you obviously agree with all this travel and transportation as you proposed for this travel?
I have no problem with it now. If the board wants to see a reduction, then basically what I'm looking for is if you'd like to see a percentage reduction, then we'll go back and do the cuts from there. And have a conversation with the department heads so they can make the appropriate.
It's already less than last year's.
No, it's, it's an increase.
It's an increase.
It, it increases thirteen percent over last year.
Well, I know last year we, we did everything we could to trim it. I know you went back to it again and again. If it's possible that we can look at it again this year to see if it can be further trimmed.
All right, so I heard kind of about trimming, so if we're looking at what our budget was last year, would, would the board support that same, that same obligation?
I would be a favor of it. Do you know how much of the, you said it went up, how much thirteen, thirteen percent, you know how much of that was general fund versus enterprise?
Uh, in general fund, well, last year our budget was one hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-nine. This year poses two hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars.
So that's the significant portion. Yeah, I would like to see that looked at again. All right. Anybody else?
Okay, moving on, heading capital just, this starts on page thirty-seven. And we, so one, also at the front of your book, you're going to see the budget of capital plan that all the department heads submitted during, during this budget process. Okay, this is what we use as part of the budgeting process. So we have over thirteen point three million dollars in capital aggressive departments. And we're recommending citywide five point five million dollars of capital this year. And the general fund that includes two million three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Rebuilding funds, two hundred thousand, water fund, five hundred twenty-five thousand. Sewer fund, one million two hundred fifty-three thousand, the electric fund, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. And the solid waste fund, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So on page forty-one, which is where the, the general fund requests start, you're going to see pictures of those requests. And, and what was recommended and what was denied. So, and if you have any specific questions about these, I'm bringing the department head up to this. But on my recommendations for technology, we recommended these pieces because they're end-of-life and they're requirement to be the new technology. On page forty-two, with police capital request, we recommended funding six hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars to replace ten police vehicles. That's a constant thing that we always have to deal with. We do not recommend any other capital for police. On page forty-five.
Oh, the playmate's back.
You recommended what, police?
We recommended.
Did a fleet replacement?
Six hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred seventeen dollars. If you see anything in red, that is not a recommendation. While the police department did make quite a few recommendations, we can justify it.
We approved the shelving before the evidence.
We did, we did phase it. We had first phase, it had been installed, then we went to a head. See about the second phase, we can justify it in this budget on the general line.
Question on the parking lot expansion. I know that's been an issue for quite a while. Is, if, if that were to be done, would those spaces be available for K for Park and PD is out, not typical shop hours?
No, they would not. PD has recommended fencing that in, so they can have their specialty equipment housed there.
A lot of parking in the mall, so they could fence that off there.
Question. I don't know if this is considered the IT or not, but with the channel three?
We'll be getting to that shortly. If there are no other questions on PD, we'll get to fire, which starts on page forty-five. For fire rescue, we did recommend funding extrication tools. And pegonite, which is a wall covering that they installed to fire, the fire tower when there, when there's cracks in that firefighting. So that will replace it that was required for that.
No questions, we can move to parks and recreation. It starts on page forty-seven. Can I, since you're on parks and recreation, just to jump back, where are we with the part-time positions for Stanley Way? I think we've had several that were open a few years ago.
Is Carrie Warren here? Saw her a few minutes ago.
She said she had to pop back out because of the.
She'll, she'll be here this afternoon when we get through each, each department, so we can answer that question. So in parks and recreation on page forty-seven, we did recommend funding a top dresser for the turf on all of our, all of our parks. We also recommended paving. And that would be to, to repair issues at Lost Creek Park boat launch, the loop around Jack's Island, Union Point Park and Glenberry Park entrance.
Is this boat ramp launch area, are we keeping doing something with the actual ramp itself?
Not the ramp itself, this is going to the ramp.
Going to the ramp.
The asphalt is just not held up, so a little bit of the ground, the concrete in those areas because it's just rained out so much over the years. The asphalt is not worked in, in several of those areas.
There's, there's a bit of an issue with some of those ramps down there.
But you're talking about the ones that are far in the angle.
Well, not only that, they drop off, where do you come, when you drop off the axles, I, I mean, I've had people just pull their axles out from underneath the trailer trying to get up out of there. Let me just ask you this one question. Do we have a sign or something up there saying end of ramp?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
Well, then it's just me an issue.
Question, with the security camera installation, is that?
Question, with the security camera installation, is that all parks?
So, no, we've been doing phases over the last several years of that. I think the only two parks that are remaining are Martin Marietta Park and Pleasant Hill Community Center. Then Pleasant Hill Park, those are the only parks that are remaining. And we only put cameras in, either we knew there were high ground areas, or, or we have large crowds, so we weren't gonna break into that. So there's really only two parks that are left in that project.
And my other question is, when we talk about, um, the parks with the, the, um, not fishing piers, but the different piers we discussed previously, is that included in the parks and recreation? Or we've already decided which ones will be upgraded?
So the ones that were in the budget for this year, they have purchased all of the materials, so they will be upgrading those. And that, that's a project that, that would be going in-house.
Foster, on the cemetery upgrades?
Yes.
It looks like that funding could help for some expansion, if I read this correct? Add the colbarium. Is, do we look at the return on, if we spend seventy-five thousand, what we would get out of that?
Yeah, the reason that we did not recommend this, that is, we're gonna have to bring this back to the board for actual presentation, so that I don't think staff is ready to, to make an actual recommendation in implementing things. So that's why that was not included in this.
And then my last one on parks and rec is the scoreboards. Which, which locations will the scoreboard be added to?
I believe the last two recommendations that they have were, um, it's one or the other. It's either gonna be Pierce Park, or Fort Totten, and, and one of the fields over it, Seth West Bear Park.
Should we, since Seth West Bear is included in bond referendum, should we hold off on that aspect of it and see how the bond referendum could?
Any other questions on parks and recreation?
Uh, yeah, with the Martin Marietta Park, um, yeah, we need to hold off on that requested amount for a hundred thousand dollars until the bond referendum.
That, that was not included in this. If you see an item in red or it says a recommendation and zero, we did not recommend that. Only, only if you'll see it in blue, under the requested amount, we would recommend it.
You said it's not?
Not recommend, oh, it is in blue, it's not in red.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's said, recommend it, that's what I was like, okay. Alright, thank you.
On page fifty, in development services, we have a recommendation for a vehicle replacement. That replaces an existing vehicle. If there are no questions, we move to public works on page fifty-one. So in public works, there's a request for fleet maintenance service equipment. This is diesel commercial truck diagnostic system, then an additional AC service machine, shop floor scrubber. There's a request for the garage. Public buildings, there's a request for utility golf cart.
I assume that's gonna have tags on it? And it says it's for greater access within the historic district, if you're gonna be driving on the streets.
No, it will not have. You're not tagging, how are you, George?
Lot likely, no, not, not unless you say me too.
Yeah, well, how, how else are they gonna get from?
George, you wanna make a comment about that?
Because he knows the chief police. I don't too, I got more to do.
I don't believe no one in the police, the chief of police lets us get around malls. Now, a lot of ti- a lot of times this is for, uh, Leans and Montez, where we have street places, um, things like that, that, that we do facilitate that. So, you know, if, if it becomes a need to do that, we will tag it if we see it. See if you used on the Agro Public Street, it's not closed, it's gone through.
Then in public buildings, we have some fleet replacements. Roof replacement on the vault center.
Oh, no. I think the board needs to give some consideration to this. The vault center's been a huge success. Uh, we touted it was federal, state, county, city, all involved in this. And it's been a really great deal for the community. But now it looks like the burden's starting to fall on the city. I, I'm curious what the board's thoughts would be on transitioning the vault center property to the county or the college and let them be responsible for making such a difference.
And maybe you made a comment about that in one of the last meetings, and, and we already did some research to make sure that there was nothing tied to the brand. So we'll, we'll have an update for you on that much likely within the next board meeting. Because this is two roofs, but there's a lot more than two out there.
That's correct.
So we will hold off on this until we finish gathering information?
We can certainly do that, yes. Then we have a replacement of HVAC units, this is citywide, two hundred ten thousand for that. We have quite a few buildings until those units do go out.
We do that in-house as well, don't we? Don't we do the installations in-house? I don't think we're doing as much as we used to with that, George can respond to that.
We do, we can, we certainly can handle full replacements, and we do that, um, this last past cycle, we did a, a lot of units at Kale Road, and that was, we did contract that, but it was because that building was built, all the air conditioners were all the same age and were at the end of their life cycle, so it makes sense to contract them because we had multiple units that we wanted facility. Just depending on the location of the building, it would depend on if we contracted, we'd self-install.
Then in streets, we're doing this for Bobcat Center Mount mower. Alamo side mount mower attachment, and replace, uh, the F-150 dump bed, dump bed with a flatbed on that. Also to replace another dump bed, nineteen ninety-eight International. An F-150 Supercab. Hundred fifty thousand dollars in sidewalk improvements. Eight hundred thousand dollars in roadway improvements. One hundred twenty thousand dollars, uh, in updated traffic and patrol cabinets for, for the traffic systems that the city owns. And a skid steer paddle rig attachment for stormwater.
Now, how many feet of asphalt do we get for eight hundred thousand dollars? I'm sure it's not much.
Just as a generalization, this is very general, depending on street depth and what is needed to be done to the road, if it's covered with other or if it's just in the direct other way, there's nothing really associated. One city block for a willing and, and resurfacing has been going on about forty thousand dollars.
Forty thousand for a city block?
One city block.
So, one of the bond referendums will be for transportation, streets and sidewalks. The, the eight hundred thousand dollars, I see the note here for roadway improvements. So if it's still eight hundred thousand dollars, it's just that four hundred thousand's coming from the general fund, and four hundred thousand's coming from, uh, the motor vehicle fee?
Yeah, the four hundred thousand is, will be a transfer from the general fund into the project fund.
So.
Yeah, some of that will be covered with power bill money as well.
So if, well, power bill comes into play, I'm trying to figure out, because this budget recommends taking a half a million from fund balance, correct? Balance. So if we were to come up with a half a million and not have to take that and wait and see what the outcome of the bond would be, we may not have to spend this money, we wouldn't have to take out plenty of money.
I think any of the streets and, and paving, any of the streets and the, and the sidewalks will rely more on power bill funds for that, um, so.
Sidewalks?
Yes, and so I wouldn't recommend any cuts on those since, since we have to spend whatever our allocation is for power bill. Anything else would be on the table for you, for your discussion. Any other comments on, on public works? The last, on page fifty-six, page fifty-five, fifty-seven, stormwater. Those skid steer power rig attachments. A, another trash trout could be put in the, uh, and stringed up with this trash, and then a re- replacement, two replacement vehicles.
So is it a hundred seventy thousand dollars for both vehicles?
No, that's the total.
For both vehicles?
Total for both, that's correct.
So we don't know what the price is, just the truck, is it? George, you want to break down? Well, I'm just looking at this one here, this one here, and this one here, and they're all different prices on them, it's just.
Yeah.
And it's the same truck. Again, I think with certain caveats, um, each department has, has certain, certain factors that they, they have on there for whatever their unique operations are.
Yes, some, some of the trucks may have, uh, more body on it, or may have a different feature like a dump bed or, or something similar to that. So not, not each truck is, is general across the whole league, um, when we want to do.
Any questions on stormwater? Moving into water fund requests. Several, several replacement vehicles. Also, we have the rotation of, of, of wells and wastewater and water treatment plant equipment. As well as a variety of water system improvements, that's a favorite question in water. And sewer on page fifty-nine. Vehicle requests, replacement mower. Replace agent updated equipment control components.
And this truck's only two thousand five. We want all of them.
We want them all.
Some are sixty, some are sixty-five, it's the same picture. So, so Foster question, um, on, on the mowers? Are we typically going with the same brand so they're somewhat interchangeable if we need repairs done? And do we have each department have their favorite brand?
Each, each department does do their favorite brand. I think the majority of the molding is in parks and recreation, they maintain their own mowers there. And one of the resources, Jordan, you can probably speak more to this than myself, I don't think they've got many mowers. Um, and but Jordan, you're, you're more than welcome to go out and speak on that.
Reason I'm asking is if we're buying multiple units from the same vendor to, we can get a better price. And if we're just because of, because certain department has the preference, they want John Deere versus a, or a Cal. Mayor, all of ours are on the same make, basically same make and model, all of them just waste plant are same make and model, all of them are the same play. However, we, we need, so we, we don't, we never need two or three a year, so we're always, it's always kind of a one-off, so I don't really do much of a discount if we need something frequent, volume should not.
Alright, next sewer, sewer fund request, there are several replacement vehicles in there, we have already covered those. Then also some, some sewer system maintenance. And redevelopment of, of the sewer pump station. Questions on any of those other requests? In the electric fund, we did recommend, we did recommend, um, replacing overhead and underground infrastructure in the amount of four hundred thousand, Old Town Cross, and then two hundred fifty thousand dollars for Greenbrier. Replace substation batteries in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. A substation security system in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Control system servers in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. GPS batteries in the amount of six thousand dollars. Communication control in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars. And there was another piece of technology for ten thousand dollars for communication control. Any questions on electric?
Yes, I do, um, on page sixty-two. Complete replacement, why was that not recommended? On the electric?
So, so in just a minute, we're gonna get into the enterprise funds themselves, and I'll, I'll, I'll talk more about that. You heard Charlie's, uh, recommendations earlier, and, and so we're gonna, we're gonna kinda dive into that. And then the final fund we have is solid waste fund, and then the, and basically there are two, two replacement vehicles for that. How much are one replacement vehicle?
I'll just, um, I know, I guess it was a year or so ago, um, there was a local company that was requesting the opportunity to essentially bid on the solid waste request. I don't know how much would be involved with putting out a RFP, RMQ, whichever one it is, um, to see what that would be. It may not be viable, but I would like to see us do that, because we continue, I mean, this, this is some significant equipment that we invest in that department, and that company that spoke to us was very confident that they could provide the same or higher level service at a lower cost, which took off some of the workload that George mentioned earlier, uh, staff fielding calls, I think he said two thousand calls or so about that. I don't know what that type of the board is, but to me, I think it's, if it's a minimal cost to see what options are out there, I think we have the sheer responsibility to at least give that, I'll listen. So would you like to use?
Is that for?
Solid waste.
Solid waste.
Trash pickup? No, 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 not trash, solid leaf and limb.
Okay.
White goods, brown goods that we do.
Uh, contacting it out, that out.
I mean, I don't.
That's a service that everybody really likes, so as long as it doesn't interfere with the service. Okay, doing anything, checking on anything? Is anybody opposed to hearing what might be available?
I'm not opposed to hearing.
Alright. Now we're going into Schedule C and J, page sixty-nine, and, and. Mayor, I think the deal will be filled till at least twelve-thirty to take a break, come to deal with everyone. Tanya?
Alright, as I foster said, we're set on page sixty-nine, the single fees and charges. All of the changes are redlined. Just wanted to point out, some of these are not all changes to the fees, but maybe just a cleanup of the, the layout. So, for example, in section two for cemeteries, uh, there was only one change to the fees. The rest of it is cleaning it up, making it consistent where resident and non-resident are all on one line. Trying to simplify and organize the schedule of fees and charges layout. So there are several changes to each of the, to each of the section, or several sections that have changes. So if we can go through each one, if you wanna look at just by section, and if you have any questions, other department heads can come up and answer those.
I just got a question, are the beer wine's being collected by Grayden County, correct?
No, beer wine licenses? The city has their own.
Okay.
I think when you do have a beer wine license, you, your ABC, then you pay the county, and the mountain, pay the city and the mountain as well.
So which department collects that?
Finance. They send out invoices annually.
Are we now set where resident, non-resident?
Double?
Double, yes sir.
That's on everything, on every fee?
That's definitely in parks and recreation, I may not be able to, no, it's not double on every single thing. Where, where there's a resident, non-resident fee, we can, we do that, yes.
So outside of parks and recreation, where could we not do that?
The main thing I think about is, um, if, if we charge for water customers outside of the city a different rate. Okay, you got it, but statute of law, you cannot do it, regardless of current business customers.
So this doesn't include rates, this is just fees and charges, everything here should be resident and non-resident is double.
That's correct. Any candidates, questions for any, any department, we're going to bring them up to discuss this with you.
Maybe if, um, George, if you could provide some clarity, um, seems to have come up a lot recently about commercial dumpster services. The city charges something, and then the customer actually gets a bill from GFL as well. Can you maybe just provide some clarity around how that process works?
So if you're, if you're frontline service within the city, you require EFL for, for the service, and obviously a commercial dumpster would be billed for that service. The, the back end charge from GFL is if they rent a can from GFL correctly, as the city does rent a can. Now, they're free to purchase a can, rent a can from someone else, but the service must be provided by GFL. So you couldn't get a separate bill as GFL is providing the can to the customer.
And if somebody, if their dumpster gets full and they call for a out-of-sink pickup?
They get, they get charged for an additional pickup.
By the city or by GFL?
They get charged by the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions on fees and services or scheduled fees? If there are any questions on that, we're going to go ahead and jump in your book to the water fund tab, page two fifteen. So on page two fifteen, some of the highlights, as you can see from our slide here. As of March thirty-first, there are approximately three hundred and fourteen days of cash on hand. This shows an increase from the previous month. The benchmark of two hundred and forty days was established in twenty-fourteen by the governing board. Uh, now, some of you may have been on the board at that time, some may have not, so we have passed out that, that policy in front of you, so you can have that to review. This budget is focused on continued improvements in the city's water production and distribution systems to enhance service to our existing customers and to support demand from regional growth. This recommended budget is thirteen million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which reflects a ten point eight percent decrease in the current year revised budget. This also includes five hundred and twenty-five thousand capital as previously discussed. Are there any questions that you may have on the water fund?
Yeah, Jordan, I, I promise that, I would ask this to somebody. When we made the switch from the Black Creek aquifer many years ago, and our water quality is not as good as it was. Is there anything that we can do to help soften the water so it's not as hard as it is now?
Uh, so we've tried to do a couple of things. First is we maximize the amount of Black Creek water we can use every day. So what we're allowed to use by permit, we use that much every day. We make up the difference with water from the gas, the energy, the shower, or the first of the plant. About a fifty-fifty blend right now, uh, and that's a uniform product action, all that mixing happens before it goes out to any customer, so everybody gets the same product. We start getting some weird water chemistry when you try to get the water too soft. Creates some unintended consequences. We've run a balance now that's fairly soft, it's not what it was before, when it was strictly Black Creek water. If you compare to other regular systems, it's still way down on, on the spectrum. Get water too soft, it becomes, uh, you know, it creates smaller issues. Uh, most notable, you, you increase your likelihood of, of reaching metals into the water. So metals and galvanized pipe, copper plumbing, lead plumbing, getting into the water source. That becomes a greater risk once you get the water too soft. It's also our number one expense in water treatment. So, um, we're trying to bal- balance quality, value, all that at the same time, and the product we give. We do get, we do get comments from time to time. Um, if anybody really has a problem or listens, and so there are, you know, individual solutions that you can install at the house. So the number of complaints or calls or questions we get a year, you know, the twenty thousand customers, it's a fraction, fraction, fraction of one percent. Uh, so it seems like we've got a product that we valueize, it seems like it's okay, quality-wise, people are acceptable of it. It's a balance thing, and those are the two real concerns. One, if you try to get it too soft, it's a weird, it creates a weird water chemistry, and two, it increases their cost a bit. Thank you.
Any other questions on the water fund? All right, moving to the next tab in the sewer, starting on page two hundred and thirty-seven. So from the slide up on the screen, as you can see from the slide, as of March thirty-first, there are approximately two hundred and twenty days of cash on hand. This shows an increase from the previous month. The benchmark of one hundred and seventy-five days was established back in two, two fourteen, as I noted stated. This budget is focused on continued improvements in the city's sewer treatment and collection systems to enhance service to our existing customers and to support demand from regional growth. The recommended budget is fourteen million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This reflects a one point three percent decrease in the current year revised budget. It's also included one point, one million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand in capital as we previously discussed. Any questions on the sewer fund? All right, no questions, we're going to move to the electric fund on page two hundred and fifty-seven. So you heard the presentation that Charlie made earlier, and he made a lot of very good points. I agree with Charlie on the needs that the department has. But we also have to understand, um, that we're going to have to continue to pass those costs along to our customers. So as we looked at this budget this year, and, and granted with the presentation you saw earlier, we received this yesterday afternoon. Finance has not had the opportunity to validate the numbers, I haven't had the opportunity to look into it. So the budget that I recommended is the budget that is in this book. And so as you can see from this slide, as of March thirty-first, there are approximately thirty-four days of cash on hand. This shows a decrease from the previous month. On July twenty-twenty-four, the days of cash on hand is sixty-seven. The benchmark is at ninety. Now, we have not been able to meet that benchmark, I believe it's twenty-twenty-two. So we have definitely got to increase that cash. My comment on, on supplying any of the needs that Charlie needs, we have to, we have to put cash away. And we have to prove that we're financially solid before we can go out for a revenue bond or for big ticket funding. And that's, that's just the bottom line. And part of that is going to be to increase those rates as well. This budget is focused on delivering safe and reliable electric service through systems where I have electric customers. During the budget year, we send a twelve percent increase plus a PCA to help meet the increasing demand. We have an aging infrastructure. There are a lot of concerns with it. When it was extremely cold weather, Charlie was worried that there was going to be a failure, I was worried. And the same thing can happen when, when it gets hot. But we've got to get a hold of our days of cash on hand first, and we've got to see that increase. As Charlie said, he'd like to see a hundred and twenty, even the consultant said that they were seeing some electric utilities with over two hundred days of cash on hand. Again, that's very important. The recommended budget for this year is sixty-eight million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That reflects a three point one percent increase in the current year revised budget. We're allocating nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in capital, as previously discussed. Two point six million of that allocation is to go toward that fund balance. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, I, I know, what is the recommended increase in this next fiscal year in the electric, for the electric rates?
So what we heard from Charlie, Charlie, come up here in just a second. I believe what I was hearing more was a four point five percent increase in electric rates, is that correct, Charlie?
Yes, sir.
And we just had a twelve percent increase?
We had a, we had six percent July first, a six percent plus PCA on January, effective January first.
Well. I'm going to say this. No disrespect, I understand the problem that we have, but I'm really not interested in putting another four point five percent increase in the electric fund. I know we have to do it. But I'm just not interested in, we just put twelve percent in, another four point five percent. I, I'm just, I know we have to do it, but I really don't want to pass that on, that burden on to our customers. But I know we can't keep it ourselves.
That's right, we cannot sustain that.
Don't be mad, Charlie.
I'm not.
Are you looking for direction?
I'm, I'm presenting this, what we've got in the budget, what we're, what we're recommending. Item, but again, the, and, and, and yes, uh, if the board is interested in, in an increase, and we're going to have to do that, that won't be part of this budget. That will be a follow-up after this budget is adopted. So we're what we've done previously.
So this bu- adopting this budget does not, would not adopt a four point five percent increase?
No, it will not. That will be a separate item.
I guess I would just offer some clarification. If you opted to consider the three and a half percent, three percent rate increase with the unrestricted PCA, or the four and a half increase with the PCA restrictions. And all of the operating budget that I've submitted, and the first year of my capital plan. We can pay debt service on that, and we could get a loan at that. That would cover this year's operating expenses and the first year of the five-year capital plan.
I, I would, I would just offer the recommendation that we get through this budget, and sometime this summer, we have a work session dedicated to this. Because one question that I would, I would have, that I would like to see is a, a chart that shows the wholesale power increases that we've received for whatever period of time you think is beneficial. Because this chart, I can't see those numbers, uh, where the cash on hand is going down. How many of those data points are after we've had the increases in PCA installed? Three or four, I'm guessing?
No, I'm, well, one. February one, twenty-twenty-five.
But we had one increase in July of last year.
You're correct, let me get oriented here. About three. Remind you that there was a six percent in June, then six percent in December with the PCA, so there's, there's a time difference there. You don't see all twelve percent.
Sure, but I still see the.
Correct.
The trend going down.
Correct.
There hasn't been even a leveling off unless finance tells me that I'm, I'm seeing something that.
And I believe that's on power supply lines.
And, and during the work session, we did five more detailed information. Stand up, bring down to that.
Well, John, please, John, please. So would you, you recommend a three percent rate increase, correct?
With an unrestricted PCA.
Right, where, where you're, where can you balance monthly, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're wanting to approve a four point five percent?
Three percent.
Three percent, um. And that would keep you?
That would, that would, um, give us enough money to fund my recommended operating budget and, and get lending on the first year of my five-year capital plan.
And. So I, I don't see why, why y'all are objecting to that.
Well, I didn't.
I, I mean.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not objecting to it, I just said I hate to pass that on, I said, I also said, I know we have to do it.
Yeah.
But we're talking about four and a half percent.
What about when you get to that point, when you don't, when something happens, you don't have no electricity?
Well.
Because, because we didn't do what this man is asking us to do.
I, I, number one, I, I don't think that's got anything to do with.
Yes, it does.
Problem that we have at the, what's that power plant now, I mean, that substation? Lewis Farm Substation is the one that's got, that's giving the problem. I live over there where that's going to happen. I was calling Charlie and the city manager constantly during that cold weather, asking, what is our usage, how close are we? And they were sitting on pins and needles. I, but, but until we come up with that twenty million dollars to build this new substation, none of this is going to have anything to do with that. You know, and it's four point five percent increase without a restricted PCA. A three point three percent with a restricted PCA, or, but, but it's unrestricted. So it's one or the other. It, but it's going to come up to about four, five, forty-five percent increase, period.
I think it's needed.
Well, I think we have to do it.
Yeah, we do, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, we can't keep going in the hole.
Exactly, and that's what happened before.
But I just said I hated to do it.
Yeah, that's what happened with previous boards before, you know, you're not listening to your director, and that's what got us in some way into this mess.
That's not true. Previous directors didn't, didn't disagree with the rates increases at the time. It's our wholesale power costs has increased substantially over that period of time.
We as a board, don't we as a board, we find a lot, we're the ones that give the ultimate approval for this. And there was not no increases in our power rates, correct? For the last, what was it, nine years? So that is a board, that was a board decision over nine years, whoever served on the board over time, I might have been part of it as well, but still.
But, but you said, I think I understood you to say that the board didn't listen to the director at the time.
That's correct.
Well, the director at the time, and two years ago, Charlie, didn't ask for an increase?
Well, I'm just specifically saying, two years ago, I mean, whenever he comes up and asks us for an increase, he sees the need for it. That's, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm.
Charlie, let me ask you, if it's a discussion about meeting or matching Duke's cost. We'd have done that six months ago, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. If, if we were, if we were either go to the same kilowatt hour rate as Duke, or either one penny under Duke, would that help you?
I, I trip over how you ask the question.
Oh, I, I tripped over asking.
Because when you say raise the rates, I think about the cost per unit. I can raise the cost so that the customer's experience is very similar to Duke's. My proposal is a more gradual approach over the next four or five years on reaching that. But we could, I could come up with a rate design that gets you right there right now.
I just get tired of hearing the people that complain, and you know who I'm talking about, so, I, you've been working with this customer, this constituent man. But it's, it's constantly, I wish I was on Duke Power, they're so much cheaper. You know, I hear that, I hear that a lot. And even, and it's just not true. Duke Power don't sell water and sewer and trash pickup.
Can you do me a favor? Can you set us up a meeting with that constituent, and I'll bring my Duke Power bill, and I'll sit down and show him?
Oh, I think he's already been, I think he's already.
Because I, I've made that offer, and nobody seems to take it up yet.
I guess, I guess I got confused a minute ago, I want to, I want to clarify. The, there were two different events that occurred this winter. One was in December, and we reached our peak capacity for Lewis Farm Substation. One was in December, and we reached our peak capacity of Lewis Farm Substation. And in response to that, I had to disconnect customers and move them on the system in an emergency situation. They lost power.
Right.
Then, that was localized to that station, that part of the system's capacity. The substation, the electric system capacity project that I had in the first year of my five-year capital plan, the twenty million dollars, resolves that problem, and it fixes some other things. Then, in February, temperatures dropped. And of course, we're certainly concerned about that. But my movement of those customers in December, we were hovering around that. I didn't have to move them in, I didn't lose any customers. But they were, we're approaching additional capacity limitations on the system, as well as Duke was sending me notices, sending, we may have capacity limitations on the Duke system, and there's nothing I can do about that. When, when they shut us off, they shut us off. So, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear. The twenty point, twenty million dollars in the first year of my five-year capital plan resolves the capacity problem, resolves the problem of Lewis Farm Substation, and gives us some...
He has got his own letter. All right, we're gonna hit one board, and then it will be about time for, for lunch, right? So, if you'll turn to page two ninety-three. This is solid waste fund. Also see inside. At the March thirty first, there are approximately two hundred and one days of cash on hand. It shows a decrease from the previous month. No benchmark was ever set on this fund. The budget's focused on the oversight of solid waste and sanitation collection services for our residential and commercial customers. This also includes residential, residential budget payment to debris bulk waste and citywide litter payment. This recommended budget is five million and two thousand six hundred dollars, which reflects an eight percent increase of the current year revised budget. Rate increase for residential and commercial customers is expected to be twenty cents per month. Currently, a sixty-five gallon cart and one service picked up a month is, a week is nineteen dollars thirty-five cents. That would go up to nineteen fifty-five per month. This is mainly because of the GSL, GFL agreement, where we have, have automatic increases, and also the landfill is charging more this year as well. Dental services will also increase per the slide you see here. This also includes one new position in the office assistant period we discussed previously, as well as two hundred and fifty thousand in capital as previously discussed. Any questions?
No. You remember who it was, the mayor was talking to, that, that you'd like to contact the service?
Um, so you want to take a break at this time? I, I said we'll take a break now, and then we'll back up after lunch. Okay, if I can get a motion, recess for how long?
Thirty minutes?
Uh, until one P M? Senator, I have a motion from Alderman Astor, and a second from Alderman Bess. Any discussion? All those in papers, I, I, when you post. Okay, recess till one o'clock. Okay, uh, it's one o'clock, so we are back at it. Mr. Hughes, it looks like we're at one D, the general fund, if I'm correct?
Yes, sir, so we're ready to go ahead and move into the general fund, so Tommy, you can go ahead and get that slide. So, so the entire budget, whether it's enterprise fund or general fund, this does include a three percent cost of living adjustment for all employees. Then that's just got information, eight, eight proposed permissions in the general fund. Go ahead. So, add-on tax revenue, just, just to give you an idea what we're looking at with this. Real property, four point four billion dollars. Personal property, three hundred and fifty million. Certified valuation, sixty million. Registered vehicle, motor vehicle valuation, five hundred and fifteen million. That, that's where we'll get our five point three billion dollar valuation. Our current tax rate is thirty-nine cents for a one hundred dollar valuation, which gives us about twenty million seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand in revenue. The assessed property values increased by three hundred and eighty million from FY twenty-five to a close of FY twenty-six, which gives us additional one point five million dollars in additional revenues over the last year. And one penny is equal to five hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars in the next budget. So, we always do this comparison of, of cities around the state. And so, as you'll see, from the very top at Goldsboro, the tax rate, this is the third column, they're at eighty-two cents, and we're at thirty-nine cents per hundred dollar valuation. Now, the interesting thing, we, I haven't added this here, is in terms of what the penny gets you, that's the interesting thing to see. Our evaluation, I'm, I'm pleased with our evaluation, but I'd like to see it higher, because really, the, the highest one is in Greenville, and they're at eight hundred and six thousand dollars per penny on that rate. So, it gives you a good idea, this is in your budget book, when you get the chance, if you have an interest in that, check that out. More detail.
Charlie's lagging.
Okay, um, let's see here, this just breaks, breaks it down on the expense category of salaries and benefits. So, we're seeing a seven percent change over the, of the current budget year. Our operating capital is about a four point six percent increase. Our capital for general fund is a twelve point nine percent increase, and then the, the debt and transfers, so about a ten percent increase. Overall, we're seeing a seven percent increase in the general fund budget this year. So, we're gonna keep this slide up for, for a little bit, to help you with the page numbers. We're gonna start with our governing board. This will start on page eighty-nine. And the governing board tab as well. So, this recommended budget is two hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars. This reflects a six point four percent increase in the current year revised budget. The budget includes board salaries and benefits. Also continued support of memberships at the following organizations. UNC School of Government, Eastern Carolina Council of Government, North Carolina League of Municipalities, the New Braunian Area Chamber of Commerce, and continued support of allies for Cherry Point Tomorrow. This also includes travel allowance for governing board in the amount, total amount of three thousand dollars, or five hundred dollars per all of them. Any questions on the governing board budget?
Yes.
This is on page eighty-nine, or the governing board tab.
You say eighty-nine?
Yes, sir.
Can you pull the page to ninety-two to the reports?
I just got in, I went out, and we were talking about, I come in on T L E in Foster.
So, what I, what I mentioned, we went through the add-on tax rate. We are not recommending a tax rate increase this year, that's, that's what we flat, thirty-nine cents. This budget does include a three percent cost of living adjustment across the board for enterprise funding and general fund employees. The total recommended budget for governing board is two hundred and ninety-five thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars, which raises a six point four percent increase over the current year. Highlights of this included, this covers the board salaries and benefits, and also supporting memberships to the school of government, to the Eastern Carolina Council of Government, League of Municipalities, Chamber of Commerce, and allies for Cherry Point Tomorrow. And this also includes travel allowance, so a total of three thousand dollars, or five hundred dollars per Alderman for that.
What, what do you get out of the allies for Cherry Point Tomorrow? What exactly is that organization?
I don't know much you've got over there.
Yeah, basically, what they're, is, is with the base, a lot of the benefits that we get from employment with the base is the allies they support the community. We've got a lot of people who, FRCEs and all that, that, that we have, people that live in New Bern that work on, on the base, so with the revenue that they bring in, it would just have the support, support of that.
How do we get the support?
With, with having a membership there, and that requires someone on the board as to, they, they utilize the personnel employed to go and do, they'll talk to the, the elected officials in D C. So, that they will continue to give support to the base.
Most municipalities in Craven County, members?
Yeah, we got, I know Craven County is, Pamlico, pretty much everyone, all around, surrounding us, are members.
The military's a lot of important, sort of, areas, and it definitely shows the city of different sports that are everywhere.
Foster, on page ninety-one, I act as the only one I see, but you mentioned some others, did they fall somewhere?
Everything else falls under, let's see here, it's...
Dues, under dues and subscriptions, this is under, takes ninety under fixed charges. Okay. List those out separately. If there are no other questions?
Hold on one second, Foster.
Yes, sir.
Here on ninety. For the board, you said it was a three percent for the board?
Yeah, that, that includes all employees, that's it.
So, I like to do for the board is four percent seven three. I don't know where the board is at with that.
Are you talking about cost of living?
Cost of living? Yes.
I'm confused, Charlie, what is it you want, out of hearing?
Uh, four percent.
For what?
For, uh, the cost of living, for the board.
For the board or for the city employees?
For the board.
What are we gonna do, we need to do everything for the city employees, I'll get it.
Okay, well, we do four percent across the board.
Oh, how much is that number?
Let's see here, fair, one second. So, to give you an idea, let's see here. A, a three percent cola, which is what we're recommending, that's across the board. Three percent cola, that, that, that costs us one million two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. A four percent cost of living adjustment would go to one million six hundred and eight thousand dollars.
And there's no merit recommendation? Do we have merits last year?
Did not.
So, since we did all the salary adjustments, we haven't had a merit?
We have no merits, none of that.
Is that, um, is there a concern that we're gonna get behind again?
So, each year we do a cola, that increases that classification plan that we have. So, we won't get behind on that. A merit, a merit is great to have, but unfortunately, we have not been able to afford it. You don't ever wanna pull recurring costs out of fund balance, which is what we would have to do, because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have that continued cost year in and year out. If we had it in available funds, then sure, but we just have not had that.
Well, at some point in time, I know you got recommended this year, but some point in time in the future, we're gonna have to start thinking about raising taxes a little bit. I mean, we just can't keep on doing, I was talking to people the other day, and they said, you know, we either have to raise taxes or do away with a service of some sort. And I asked them, which one do you want us to do away with? You know, and none of them could come up with an answer, so...
Well, I, I have a problem with overall asking for four percent on Mackenzie. That's my opinion, I'm heavy with this. And I also have a problem with the three percent cola across the board for all employees. Yeah, three percent for the employees, yes, but not three percent for our, our staff in place, city manager, assistant city manager, not department heads, I have a problem with that. I just feel that maybe we should just give them a bonus. And the cost of living at three percent or four percent, we give to the employees.
If we looked at a bonus, how does that translate?
Into, into...
The budget, whatever it is decided to be, the tax, whatever amount?
If it would be a one-time thing, anytime you do a fund, it's just a one-time thing, but not recurring out of...
So, the amount would be set by the board?
That, that amount would be set by the board. Well, I, I'm just concerned, I just don't want to get back in the same position that we were in several years ago. And a three percent to someone, you know, making over a hundred thousand dollars a year might be a little something, but what's our lowest pay employee, you know, thirty thousand, thirty? And it's what, three percent of that? Or that salary? Huh?
Nine hundred and...
Nine hundred dollars over a twelve-month period? That's not much of a, and then taxes have come out of that, there's not a whole lot of increase for, for them.
Sure is.
So, the budget's been presented with a three percent cola for everyone. Would the board like to change that? And you've got time throughout this afternoon, as well, right now, we're just on the governing board information, so... If you'd like to take this up after we go through this, or whatever you'd like to talk about.
You'll discuss it at the end of the meeting, though, you want to go ahead and report with the end?
So, from board. If you did a bonus versus a salary increase, the dollar amount won't change if you stick with three percent.
That's correct.
Other than it's not recurring, correct?
Exactly.
Well, I like the idea of the bonus for department heads, and of course, either three or four percent for the employees, goodness, they deserve the, I like to call them good centers. But that's what all of us are, but I, I'd like to take that, I'd do it also.
And you can take my question out, for as a board member, I, you don't have to give any of three percent, or four percent.
Okay, so, let's, let's take it one at a time. So, Alderman Royal is suggesting a bonus for department heads?
Yes, sir.
And the city, by the way, city manager excluded from this anyway, is a contracted employee, so we have to take that up separately. But every other employee, with the exception of city manager, is that what you're saying would be a bonus versus a cola?
It would be a one-time, yes, bonus.
Okay, what's the...
And if, if we do that, then we could do a four percent cola, four percent?
Well, it's still...
Same, same money.
Still gonna be the same amount of money. The only, the only relief that you're providing would be for next year's budget, that recurring cost of the cola. Three percent?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to provide the department heads, without the city manager included, a three percent bonus in lieu of a cola, and continue with a three percent cola for the remainder of the employees. Is that correct?
Three percent or four?
Three, of course. If you go to four, you're gonna find that money somewhere, is that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
But just remember, if you give these partner heads a bonus, like you're talking about doing, it, it, it doesn't have any effect, it's just a one-time thing, has no effect on their retirement, has no effect on their next-year salary or nothing, it's just a one-time thing. And a bonus, they're gonna lose money. I mean, a three percent increase in their salary as well is going to advance them to next year to get another three percent, is their, you know, is, is gonna progress. But a one-time bonus doesn't mean anything. It's a one-time five hundred dollar check, and, or whatever it would be, and that's it. It has no effect on their retirements or anything.
Question. Three percent was on there. A three percent bonus will be according to their income, so...
It's the, the three percent will be the same amount, whether it's in, whether it's given to them as a cola, which would be spread out over the next twelve months, or whether it's a one-time bonus, it's still the same dollar amount. So, it really doesn't affect the budget numbers at all, correct?
What would an average department head's salary be? Let's just, let's just say a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
You got, you got the average. One hundred forty. On average.
What is?
How? Hundred forty on the average or something.
So what, three percent of that, what bonus would they get?
What's that, forty-five, what, forty-two hundred?
Forty-two hundred dollars.
So with each salary, the three percent differs, is that correct?
That's correct. So have a motion and a second, and to further discussion?
I just, I, I mean, I, I, it's hard to be supportive, I'd love to see him get to three percent, and so it would have an effect on the retirement and everything else. Because a bonus, you would take out those type benefits, would you? You would, but.
I believe so, just.
But it wouldn't be, it would be, it would have any benefit for next year.
Right, but it'd still be at the same salary rate that you're at this year.
And nor would the cola have.
Sure would. The cola is their salary, is increased by three percent, and then next year, if you get another cola, that includes that three percent, so they'll get a three percent raise this year, which three percent next year will be of the new, their new pay. If you get a bonus, they don't, it won't work like that.
I think the only advantage to what you proposed with a bonus versus a cola is next year's budget. That three percent for all these department heads would not have to be made up in that budget. Because it's not recurring, it's a one-time. That's really the only advantage that I see. Any further discussion? Can you, now let's have a roll call, though, start with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
No.
Alderman Kenzie?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No.
It fails three.
Is there any other thoughts or ideas the board wants to ponder upon?
It's just trying to make sure that we put the employees up, not down. Because that one-time bonus is not gonna do anything for them.
So what you asked is, the three percent?
You taking away at your salaries? I apparently want y'all have it. As it, you know, with this three percent, you're talking about increasing salaries, um, did you do, I'm quite sure, did you go outside the surrounding cities and get a comparison?
In terms of, in terms of cola, or are you talking about the department's salaries?
Right, I know the department salaries was done before.
Right.
Okay, that was off, but I'm talking about for his colas, what other cities was given?
So yes, now, the majority of cities, and, you know, we're also going by the North Carolina League of the National Guard, because they just recently did a study on, on the eastern part of the state, the average cola was three point one percent. We recommended three percent based on the, uh, most recent South Region CPI. Are, are they giving merits as well? I think that there may have been forty percent of the cities on the eastern part of the state that, that are doing a cola and a merit. Uh, and they were kind of all over some of the.
What's Kavon County doing, do you have a clue?
I do not, sign, do you have it?
Yes, sir. So that to you is best, so you're saying that, um, you think they would like to have a bonus versus, um? Well, ask the department.
Yeah, that's good, I think.
I almost told somebody that I know real well, George, what do you think, you want a bonus?
Put you on fire.
I, I don't want to blatantly speak for the group, but I, I think y'all pointed, I pointed the, the differences in the two, that the bonus is a one-time thing, it doesn't impact your salary in the board. Excuse me, with, with the colas across the board, the salary increases, that does have implications for the retirement contributions and calculations for retirement, so, uh, just, you know, firstly speaking, the cola is a, you know, is a better thing, dollar amount's the same thing, the budget for the employees, the cola ends up being the better choice because it impacts in broader, the bonus is simply, you know, just kind of cash one-time, um, that there's a lot of positives to the cola versus the bonus.
Well spoken, George, what do y'all say in the background? Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, George, I get it, I get it, I get it off.
What do you think, they gonna say, no? Now, I ain't really worried, what do you think, they gonna say, no, if I was sitting here, I'd say, yes.
They're not scared of that one.
I think since here, since the motion failed, we're back to the recommendation, three percent.
Yeah, let's move on, yeah.
All right, so that's salary.
All right, any other discussion regarding the cola or salaries? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and move to administration, and that's on page ninety-three in your tab. This recommended budget is nine hundred and two thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars, which reflects a two-point-five percent increase in the current year revised budget. The budget consists of salaries, benefits, and educational training for staff, professional services if a few due diligence of the city manager, and contract services for New Braunum Works. Any questions? Any questions here? All right, next is legal, and it's on page ninety-nine in your book. This recommended budget is three hundred forty-one thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars, which reflects no increase in the current year revised budget. This budget covers services provided to protect the legal interests of the city of New Braunum, this includes the cost of city attorney and assistant city attorney. Any questions? What are the current obligations, man, for the almanac?
That might be, like, any other, um, like, filing fees or additional costs that, outside of the normal.
Thank you. We'll move on to the elections tab, that's on page one, zero, one. So this recommended budget is ninety-five thousand dollars, based on the, based on equipment received from Craven County. The budget covers the cost of the upcoming municipal election, including early voting and runoff election. If the runoff election is not necessary, the estimated cost will be significantly lower. Any questions?
Oh, Foster, yeah, what about that? With this, um, uh, estimated cost here, would that include the cost of if we as a board decide to vote the bottom referendum? Is that included in this ninety-five or the additional?
That's not in that, I think that we would, do we have any other additional fees? I don't think, I think that includes everything, yeah, there won't be any additional fees for this, question? If no question, our next tab is special appropriations. This is on page one oh three. This recommended budget is one hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars, reflects zero increase in the current year revised budget. And that includes contributions for payment to the New Braunum-Craven County Public Library, membership to Craven One Hundred Alliance, special projects that occurred during the year, discretionary spending of the governing board, currently that's set at thirty-five hundred dollars for the entire board, uh, or five hundred dollars each. And if the last budget, if the board agreed that additional funds were needed, then that would just come back before the board to vote on, and Christmas decorations for City Hall.
Back to Dunne's, the New Braunum-Craven County Public Library, Dunne's the building?
It's joint ownership between the city of New Braunum and Craven County.
So that means we will always continue to pay on that every cycle, or every year?
Yes, sir.
Is that under contract? That, are we obligated?
That, that was on a contract, um, Brimba, you have the date of that, of when that grant was done?
I have to pull one.
Well, the, that was part of many other things, including rates at the industrial part, there was one document that encompassed a lot of different things. County has spent quite a bit of money upgrading the library building, which we own half of that building. So it may be something that the board will want to discuss and talk about, what do we see as the city of New Braunum's place in the future of the library system? And since we own half the building and we're obligated to pay seventy-five thousand dollars a year, it may be worth having a discussion with the county if we would like to do something different.
Foster, do we still pay money to the airport, too? That's over with, that's over with, so I was wondering, if this was gonna be able to.
So that, like you said, Jeff, I'd be able to have that discussion with, like you just said, with the commissioners.
Question, what is the payment for? I see contractual payment, but actually, if the money is used for what?
I believe historically, that's on for periodicals and book replacements and things like that.
So upgrades and.
Supplemented into the library explosion. On that.
Yeah, um, Foster, what is, uh, the twenty-five thousand special projects?
So we always keep at least twenty-five thousand dollars in there, and that may be if, if the board wants to allocate, uh, vote on funds for, um, most recent thing we did is, a few years ago, we did a dent for, for the high school football team, or the board may want to have an appraisal on property, paint for things like that, so it's really what the board wants to do, and they, they bring that up. Any questions? Any other questions? All right, we'll move to page one oh five, PEG channel. So the recommended budget is forty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars, which reflects a four-point-two percent increase in the current year revised budget. This includes professional services for live broadcast, reporting, and indexing of city board meetings, as well as social media live stream and sound search capabilities of our meetings. It also includes live streaming to Roku, and it also includes purchasing a new video camera. Um, and while we're on this, we'll let you know that we recently heard from our insurance carrier that, uh, um, they are going to be paid a hundred thousand dollars to, to replace all the equipment that was damaged by the leak that we had at City Hall, so staff is working on ordering that new equipment now, hopefully we'll be back online very soon.
Good, because I've had, people are really asking.
You have anything, Colleen, you would like to share with us?
Uh, the new camera replaces the larger one, um, that you sometimes see us use, which is original to the PEG channel. You may recall about a year ago, we had a work session, and everything appeared to go fine, but the video ended up looking like a, a bad foreign film, uh, because the audio and video didn't match up. Uh, when I looked back at the POs for the purchase of that camera, it was purchased in the twenty-ten, twenty-eleven fiscal year. So the only thing additional to my budget this year is to replace that camera.
Any other questions? We'll move to technology, this is on page twenty-seven. This recommended budget is two million one hundred fifty-one thousand thirty dollars, which reflects a point-five percent increase in the current year revised budget. This budget includes the acquisition of many products and services necessary to ensure the efficient and secure operation of the city's vast IT system. It also includes an administrative assistant to help with this busy department, and thirty-two thousand dollars in capital for end-of-life equipment replacements. Any questions? Our next assignment, it's on page one fifteen. This recommended budget is two million three hundred two thousand one hundred eighty-six dollars, includes two divisions, accounting and purchasing warehouse. This award-winning department has received a triple crown by the Government Finance Officers Association for distinguished budget awards, certificate of achievement for excellence, financial reporting, and popular annual financial reporting award, and this did recommend one new position, we got your comments on that, and re-classification of the nomination. Any questions? Foster, um, he's, he's not here, but did Alderman Frill provide you any comments or feedback on the budget? Yeah, so he shared that he was not gonna be in town, he, he stated that he had no issues with the current budget, he just wanted to see the presentations on, on electric utility, that was his only comments. And we will be voting on this in May thirteenth? That's correct. Any questions on that? Go ahead and move to human resources, which is, starts on page one twenty-five. This recommended budget is nine hundred fifty-nine thousand fifty-eight dollars, which reflects a nine-point-nine percent increase over the current year revised budget. This budget supports the department's continued commitment to focus on workplace safety, employee development, promoting fair hiring and employment practices, and managing employee benefits. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the police tab, that starts at page one thirty-three. This recommended budget is fifteen million five hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars, which reflects a four-point-six percent increase over the current year revised budget. This award-winning department has received the national accreditation through CELEA. The budget supports a well-trained force of professional staff, whose mission is to protect and safety and proper enforcement of the law for our citizens. It also includes six hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred seventy-eight, seventeen dollars in capital to replace ten vehicles. Any questions? Just, um, on page one thirty-nine, it's under the police department budget for parking, and I assume that that's all downtown, or the parking enforcement? Wasn't, wasn't that MSD funded? So the parking control officers, the equipment, that's MSD funded? Yes. Okay. Any questions? All right. Give, give, give me a second. Okay. Chief Gallagher, um, Chief Astor is, um, looking over your budget, may want to be prepared. I told him I was, I apologize.
Although the manager is asking for fifteen million, I would accept sixteen, if you want to give it to me, it's a good choice.
Is there anything in here that you asked for that you really need, you need it?
Everything I asked for, we needed, however, I'm a realist, I mean, the police department has to play nice with the rest of the directors, and so, um, I am fortunate and blessed to have a good staff, and we're going to use what we're given to the best of our ability to meet the mission regardless of what you approve.
And I assume shot spotter is in this budget, shot spotter is in this, but this is, um, good. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move to fire rescue, that starts on page one forty-nine. This recommended budget is fifteen six hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred twelve dollars, which reflects a six-point-one percent decrease over the current year revised budget. This award-winning department has received the national accreditation through the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. And this includes seventy-two thousand dollars in capital for electrification equipment to replace wall covering and fire shooting grounds as well. The budget supports protection from the devastation of fire and high-spreeing emergencies, as well as providing quality risk awareness programs, training, and other related services to our citizens.
How did we get a decrease?
I believe it was because of capital.
It was, yeah.
On my item, on my item, seventy-three, two twenty-four. What, S and L, I read this, service and maintenance contracts, what has popped up to be a thirty-five thousand dollars contract?
So what happened was, if you see them on a vote, the seventy-three, two teen, service and maintenance contracts, it was just separated, and that was the line that we didn't pass previously last year.
Got you.
So the, uh, contract software IT is direct management, so it was just separated. There was no change in, and I don't think the increase, and it's just two different lines.
And you'll see that throughout all of the departments, we added a new account, just to separate it out, because of the Sabita tracking that we are required to do.
And then, I think there's seventy-four, nine, fourteen, an eighty percent increase. Office of last materials.
From training.
Here was, um.
From training.
Yeah, the, the actual amount requested was the same, but.
Yeah, the, the actual amount requested was the same, but three thousand was removed from, the building restricted, it was placed in a particular line to assist in purchases.
It's currently not capital, that is seventy-four nine one four. It was office supply materials.
No, so the eighty percent is actually account, this is where we were talking at the beginning where it is confusing. The account number does come first, so seven-four nine one four is the furniture and non-equipment capital, so it went from ten thousand to eighteen thousand.
You want, you want to cover in there what that, what's asked clues before that?
And also, seven-four nine fifty-four and seven-four nine seventy, I think those two groups are backwards. Giving the cost of fire department ninety-nine thousand dollars and the owner spent seven thousand dollars in fire suppression supplies.
Fire suppression supplies, that's, that is the, the account number of, uh, seven-four nine five two, that's sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, the one below the seven thousand, that's fire volunteers.
And how much is that?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand dollars.
Well, where's this ninety-nine thousand dollars coming in there?
Safety supplies. That's safety supplies, yeah.
It's the account number first and then the descriptions underneath it.
I understand, but they don't line it up right.
Yeah, they sure don't.
They're not lining up. I take these papers put across them and under seventy-four nine fifty-four is seven thousand dollars.
Right.
And you go down to seventy-four nine seventy is ninety-nine thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Right.
That's right, seventy-four nine seventy is safety supplies. The, the title was underneath the account number.
You see the account number below the...
Okay, well, if you say so, if you say so.
Yeah, we had a lot of conversations about that for this.
It's like that column needs to be wider so it, it doesn't wrap the text or the description can be made to it.
And the, when this changed is when we went to do the portrait formatting instead of the landscape where we had more of a...
I didn't see it in here chief, but I know the department was in need of a drone that got budgeted in here and the fire suppression supplies or something.
You sure what, what happened on?
I'll, I'll speak to that because we did include, I believe it's three thousand dollars under, under, um...
It's under that furniture and equipment non-capital, the one that you were asking about the eighty percent thing.
Okay. I, I assume that the nine hundred and seventy-one thousand was fire truck. Uh, second to the last.
Was it current year?
So we, we financed that or did we pay cash?
Um, for fire trucks, we, we haven't financed, so we did a deposit, so...
Have we received, have we received anything on the change of schedule work on that? If you get that, have we...
We, we have not, we most recently reached out a month ago and heard anything. We actually had engaged our consultants, thought though we inquire and then you have not heard them do anything.
So what did the, what did the current, what did we get approved to spend that money on?
To replace the OPD building.
So if we were to buy real estate, that would suffice and satisfy what's been approved?
Oh, yeah, I see where you're going.
Yeah. Buying, just buying real estate, that would, that would still create the change of schedule work, but it was to replace a building at that site, that's what the...
If we're...
At that site, that site, so anything would be a change.
But then we, we, uh, had that money to go towards purchasing a fire truck.
Exactly, that's what we have been waiting on, yes.
With your delivery date on that chief, you've heard?
So right now I know that we've, um, earned back the manufacturing, there's going to be a six-month reduction, so you know the initial purchase was around four years, uh, as far as turnaround time, so they're telling us now that they've got it back now at least by six months. So we're hoping to see even further as far as the turnaround time, that's what we're versing.
Wasn't there, wasn't, wasn't there where we've been a discount to pay it for?
I think that correctly, I think the time of purchase was, um, is...
It's still applied?
Have, have, do you all remember how to pay that?
We do, for twenty percent deposit.
On the, on the fire truck, it was fifty percent.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought it was just a...
Fifty percent deposit and then the balance is due and it's still earned.
I think we received some, um, discount by doing even a fifty percent. So, the more you put down, I think the greater the discount, but, um, I don't know how much it fluctuated.
Fifty percent, A R money for four years. How about?
It was a significant discount.
I would have had to look.
It was cheaper than that, it was cheaper than enters, then we would have made it for a long.
Yeah, it was, it was a large discount, yeah.
Any other questions on that? Alright, we'll move to parks and recreation, it starts on page one fifty-nine. This recommended budget is four million three hundred forty thousand three hundred six dollars. Highlight to this, the award-winning department has received national accreditation through CAPRA, and they're currently going through their re-accreditation this week, so Kerry, uh, good luck to you on that. This budget focuses on the maintenance and operation of twenty-six parks, multiple facilities, programs and special events offered to our citizens. This includes one hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars in capital for top dresser, tractor mount lower, to school boards, security cameras at parks and paving repairs in parks and, again, I heard comments on the school boards as well.
The positions here that we talked about?
Kerry, could you give an update on the part-time positions that, uh, we have here at Stanley White Recreation Center?
Um, we have filled two of those part-time positions, we have agreed that are not filled yet, we have made an offer, one that did not accept, um, but we're continuing to look at applications and scheduling interviews.
Would those two part-time positions be better suited if it was a full-time position?
Yeah, I feel like it would, um, we currently are using seasonal staff to fill that part-time gap. And those part-time, you know, we had not scheduled for getting more than twenty hours and the seasonals are able to fill that gap. So if we could make it one, I feel like it would be a benefit, it would give some relief to the staff.
Because you had some challenges filling the part-time positions, right?
Yeah, we're only advertising, I think, thirteen fifty for those positions.
So the financial impact would be the benefits only correct for that position? So to the board, they want to consider that?
So you filled the two, um, full-time?
Yes.
You filled the two full-time, uh, slots, just four?
We filled, um, three full-time.
Three full-time?
Two part-timers filled and two part-timers still available.
Okay, two.
So what are you recommending in there?
To convert the two part-time positions to a full-time position, so she...
To one full-time?
Correct.
Would that be better for you?
Yes, I think it would, considering we have trouble dealing with the full-time.
I'm okay with, I'm assuming that's twenty to thirty thousand dollar increase.
It would, this would most likely be a program coordinator position, can you pull that up in the classifications?
One was the two part-time positions, four, what was the title?
Facility attendant for...
I can't hear.
Facility attendant for the operations here at Stanley White.
And the full-time would be four?
It would be for recreation program coordinator here at Stanley White.
Great, so thank you.
Seventeen. Minimum is forty-eight, almost forty-nine thousand on that scale.
About sixty-eight thousand difference.
So for twenty thousand difference, is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
So for twenty thousand dollar difference, instead of two part-time employees, you would give one full-time?
Two part-time in total, what?
More about, what, maybe thirty, something thousand?
That's twenty thousand dollars difference. Or have a preference?
Well, since we, um, I want to add to it, I want to know, um, why do we not have a center supervisor here at Stanley White?
Full-time center supervisor?
Yes, yes. But you have a, a center supervisor over at West New Berner.
That's right, we have, we have basically two positions over at West New Berner right now. We have the recreation superintendent and that supervisory position here. When we, um, opened this facility and as we talked about this last year's budget, we basically reclassified some positions to have staff to work here and then we also approved four part-time positions to work at this facility as well. So, we didn't have, what, if this board would like to recommend we hire a center supervisor for this, we can certainly do that.
So do you have plans on shifting the center supervisor from West New Berner over here, since the West New Berner hours has now been cut?
No, we do not.
So what is the better lead for having a center supervisor over there and not here?
That person...
We have a bigger, larger facility here with more programming, more at, here in this, in this facility.
Right, I, I can tell you my opinion on that. This facility has quite a few staff here that can operate the programs and activities and maintain this facility with the current staffing. As opposed to over at West New Berner Recreation Center, where you have one person that's based there full-time. That facility is open ten AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and then two or three hours on Saturday. Then you have another program coordinator going back and forth, so that one facility, a manager can definitely handle that, what's going on over there with any programs or services that are offered as well as any facility rooms.
But you still haven't changed your staff in here, I mean, the numbers are the same since twenty-two, twenty-three. You haven't, you know, the staff is still remains the same. I just think that here with this facility, you have a lar, a larger workload here, you have more pro, you have programs...
We, we do have a large workload here, you have a recreation superintendent here, you have two athletic staff members that are here, you have a community enrichment coordinator that is here, and then you have a program coordinator here. Then you also have a fitness coordinator, you've got six full-time staff members that are operating this facility.
And who's operating, who's managing them?
Um, James Bullock is the recreation superintendent for this facility.
So then, since this center has come into inception, we are now, you have, uh, Mr. Bullock's in place, he's in charge, so you have, uh, is he one of the ones that for, that you, that we requested, I have to go back and look at it, for a salary increase because of your job duties?
No, he has not. I don't, she hasn't made a recommendation on that.
I haven't made a request for it, no.
Why, why not, if you, you have a larger facility here and you, you haven't fully staffed it because you're talking about implementing other employees? So I, I don't get why the workload is heavier on these employees that work within this facility. So why haven't any of them recommended to be upgraded salary-wise?
Because they're not doing any duties different than what they did before, other than being at a different center. Like, they're, they were in different places before, they were housed at different facilities. So the staff that are here doing programming have previously been doing it at West New Berner. They've come over here, they've brought their programs. Tards was located at the aquatic center because we didn't have the office space for them anywhere else. He is now over here. Um, he is, um, athletic coordinator who was also housed at the pool, because there's no other office space, is now over here. Their duties have not changed, they're just in a different location.
Alright, so, the, the two positions that you have that you are, the two you hired, they're facility attendants, correct?
Part-time facilities.
Part-time.
They do not want more than twenty hours a week, they're not allowed.
That would come down to more time. Well, I know Mr. Hughes suggested, um, actually stated in this budget that, uh, Stanley White Rex Center, center supervisor is needed. So that's my question, why, ask why isn't a center supervisor in place already?
Last year's budget, our request in the morning was not written, so...
So why, so why was it put in here to be recommended for this year?
Because we're just opening the positions that we did give or re-allocated, so...
But you still have the same posi, you had those positions last year and you asked for it, you didn't, it, it, it approved, but you still have the same positions this year and, but it wasn't asked for.
Because we just opened and I would like to see how the year goes before we put in another full-time position of that capacity. Yeah, Mr. Bullock is not able to do his other duties on top of that, then, yeah, we can add another position or request that.
How many employees do you typically have here every day now?
Um, they vary, um, when they come in, some they come in at noon or to nine, some come in at seven or to four. Uh, but throughout the day, we have four to five staff here at all times.
How many, how many patrons come to the facility on a daily basis?
Yeah, averages anywhere from sixty to a hundred and twenty.
How many programs are you offering on a daily basis here?
Um, we have about four fitness classes that go on, we have, um, open gym throughout all day and that's setting up pickleball, basketball, uh, cornhole activities. And then the other programs and staff are planning and providing, there are sometimes one-time or a series of programs.
So, back to the two part-time positions you had struggled filling, um, would the board like to entertain converting those to full-time? We should give another full-time body at this facility.
And you said in this form that that would be recommended by you to combine the two to one?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to combine the two to one.
Second. We have a motion as second, any further discussion? Here we none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Loria?
Yes.
Mayor Evan?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else on parks and recreation?
Yes, sir. Um, the, the supervisor here, are they playing on, are you going to sometime in the near future, um, look at voting someone, uh, moving someone up to be the supervisor here at this facility?
If we get that position as a center supervisor, it would most likely be some million house, if that applies.
That's when it comes over. That's when it comes over, they apply it.
I have a question regarding that also, for the new position, two to one, do you already have someone in mind in-house? Are you still, uh, applications are still out?
Um, I don't know if we've had anybody part-time that would qualify for that position. Um, there are previous applicants I interviewed when we were hired at Stanley White, if they were interested, I would look at bringing them back in for an interview.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, next to the development services, that is on page one seventy-three. This recommended budget is nine hundred fifty-nine thousand fifty-eight dollars, which reflects a nine point nine percent increase over the current year revised budget. This budget includes an emphasis on ordinance and policy modernizations, all the other professional services and management planning, zoning, permitting, inspections, community development, transportation planning, historic preservation, mapping, floodplain management, nuisance payment, mental housing code enforcement services. This includes reclassification of administrative assistance at permanent tech. And we're waiting on final information from our consultants on the other three buildings that we mentioned earlier. This also includes continued partnership with retail strategies for recruitment of retail businesses to New Berner and forty-three thousand five hundred dollars for replacement vehicles. Any questions?
Foster, who in that division wears uniforms?
Astor, who in that division wears uniforms? Um, I'll let Jessica come up and, and. Uniform, uniforms, you may be looking stab- maybe they have staff shirts and things like that for their building inspectors, but no standard of uniform, pants, and shirts like that. But Jessica, you can add more if you'd like.
I don't have anything to add. Our building inspectors wear shirts that identify themselves.
Anything else for development services?
I see on page one seventy-six that the, our redevelopment commission executive director was moved from planning, where is that now located?
So, we have a redevelopment tab that's covering shortly. Who is the, uh, CDBG? CDBG? Yeah. So what were you looking for in CDBG?
Well, there's been some, there's some discussion that that position might need to be moved to the redevelopment commission. It might be better served in that area, in a, under ZEB and because of this, it's about the same as what she was on. Maybe Jessica utilized the position and ZEB could probably help spend the money in the redevelopment commission. Just, there's some discussion.
I haven't heard any of the discussion, but I'm happy if the board wants to give direction, we can certainly look at it and go from there. Well, I might hear what the other board members think. Anybody else?
So you're ta- you're saying taking the two hundred, I think it was two hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars to be back this, this, for twenty, twenty-five budget on this, uh, CDBG program and putting it into the redevelopment commissions, is that what you're saying?
Along with the, the young lady that works there.
Ms. Fulmore?
Uh, yeah, I think.
And, and so just, just for clarification, for me one second, just for clarification, the allocation that we give CDB, uh, funds that we get, that can only be used on certain things. So the process that HUD establishes for how we determine where those funds are gonna be, are going, going to go, so.
But it can be used for rehabbing houses, right?
Well, we have found out historically over the last several years, that doesn't work out very well on the housing rehab. One, because there are a lot of owner-occupied houses in the area where CDBG funds are, they're more renter-occupied, and so that doesn't qualify for CDBG. Uh, but the, the staff is trying to get nonprofits to be partners in that, and they found out with the stringent as the CDBG guidelines are, that they have to, one, provide prevailing wages, they've got to find a contractor to work with that will pay prevailing wages and fill out the paperwork and things. And so it has been, I think, one colossal failure after another with the housing rehab. Jessica or Robert can say, tell me if I'm incorrect on this in any way, shape, or form.
All right, that could, you know, this looks really wonderful on paper. We want to do these types of programs. And I think Deasia did a wonderful job explaining a few meetings ago. The frustration that we've had with actually executing this program is that the nonprofits are not capable at the, the price limit and things to find qualified workers that meet all the red tape the federal government requires to do these programs. And it's just been, like you said, a colossal failure due to all of the restrictions of qualifications you need for the people that need to do the work. I think that frustration would exist no matter which umbrella this, this program fell under. That said, she did also provide a, a recommendation that if we want to relook at doing programs like this, because they have been successful before, that sometimes it, it may be worth it finding a qualified consultant who is very familiar with how these programs work to oversee it because they have better connections with some of these individuals and firms that are capable of doing that work under the federal guidelines, simply stated.
Because before, we had a contractor service, I can think of it.
Yes, I am.
At the point, and they were doing an excellent job.
Yes.
And, because I see this program, the CDBG money is for, I see this going back into the community. I mean, it, it, it covers a broad, uh, under this program, it covers a broad spectrum of HUD. It covers, under the choice of neighborhood, redevelopment. It covers a lot, and it comes for, you know, implementation of housing repairs and all of this. And I know before we had this program up running and we had citizens that applied for it because they needed some upkeep and repairs to their home. Ceiling, floors, wings, whatever it may be. So I would like to keep that money there for that purpose, but like you said, we need somebody to manage it.
I wasn't talking about doing anything with money other than moving it to the redevelopment commission because they also are in that area, doing work in that area. And there may be a house that's, could be rehabbed over there or something like that that they would know about. I mean, uh, it mi- it might be, I would just like to see it go back to doing like rehabbing homes.
Right.
Like the, the little old lady that we all know that worked, lived over on the canal. I mean, she sat in her house with buckets under her living room catching the rainwater.
And that's my point, that's what I wanted to get it for.
You know, and that's my point as well. I'm thinking that the ZEB, which is, knows, he surveyed areas, he knows what's over there. He knows what, what might be needed. And I'm just thinking it might be better served over in the redevelopment commission because they may know a house that needs to be rehabbed. Right beside, right beside the, um, the houses that we built.
Yes.
There's one over there that, that the redevelopment commission would love to have.
Well, see, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I'm looking at it from a perspective of, I'll just say myself, for instance, if I was living in my home right now and I needed my floors replaced, I don't want to go into the redevelopment commission. How long is that gonna take for them to get me to do, uh, just a repair for my floors?
Well, it's the same person, it'll be the same person.
No, it takes a little bit longer for the redevelopment commission and the county superintendent, ZEB and his team, because they're doing a fantastic job. But I just think that it would be a faster process.
I would think the money would be better off spent on homes versus bus stops.
So one, one concern I have would be this, the redevelopment boundary is not exactly the same as our CDBG boundary. They're, they are not the same things, I can also come speak to that. As far as going back to a housing rehab program, that is certainly something we can repackage and, and look at consultants and get in an annual action plan. Deasia does a, a pretty robust job trying to seek input every year when this, this annual action plan is put together. We got more this year than we have typically before. And I know that's, some of you have certainly helped with that. Uh, another point, it's been mentioned, a lot of our houses that need the most help and are, they have tenant occupants and they are not owner-occupied, and that almost automatically disqualifies you. And so because of that, ZEB and I have been actually evaluating other programs where we can help some of these landlords fix their house up on behalf of the tenants, and he can speak better to that because he's more familiar with them. But there are some workarounds and grant programs that can help there. And we're not sitting idle and just saying, well, you're a renter, so we can't help you. He's been really trying to work hard at that. But that does not fall under a CDBG umbrella of their program. Like, they want to give money to owners.
And Alderman Astor, that CDB allocation does come into City of New Bern. The redevelopment commission is more than welcome to apply for funds to do any type of program. That's the easiest way for them to get funds through the HUD program if they wanted to do any type of program that qualifies.
Can, can CDBG funds be used, I'm sorry, Alderman, it be used to demolish Derral Lake House?
Yes, and if, in our last annual action program, you can put up to thirty percent in there, and you did, and we are drawing that down right now. You have recently approved ones that are being funded by that program.
So we have done that the last two years, allocating the funds that we can for that. Alderman?
Yes, thank you. We, this is the second conversation the board has had that I recall about moving forward with whatever that agency was, that could rehab the houses. What is it that you need from the board of all of them? That we can move that forward and finding some contractors?
So, in the annual action plan, you know, these are the ones that we come back and Deasia will often stand before you and say, I would like to make an amendment for this because something was not working. When we create that originally, we can put that in there. There's, there are certain percentages of your allocation you can use for different things. And so we can, based on the program that was effective before, put that in a plan moving forward. And I believe she's evaluated putting that in the next one. That is going to come before you along with maintaining the thirty percent for the demolition of, of the lefty houses. So that plan just hasn't tracked yet, and the federal government budget right now is not giving me a timeline of when I can tell you when we expect to see this. Normally, it's about this time of year. We're not quite there yet with all the moving pieces up at the federal government right now.
Wasn't it, was it McDavid and Associates?
Uh, that sounds correct. It was some, it was some Nick or somebody, and it was, it was pre-me, but that sounds accurate.
Maybe they're.
So in the next action plan, we can include this?
If we haven't already passed the, the formulation of it. It has not been adopted yet, though. So yes, we absolutely can still put that in. Right now, it's being based on the public input. I can't say it for sure, it doesn't matter if this is in the plan track. We work with a consultant that, that helps us do this.
So the annual action plan is waiting on the allocation from the federal government. Since that's frozen, we can't propose anything for adoption. So we don't have an ETA on when the annual action plan will come out.
Was that the two hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars?
Yes. Yes, although we're in entitlement city, those funds are, for the most part, frozen. So we can't afford them next year.
But yes, absolutely, when the plan comes to you, if that's something you want to see in it, that would be the time to bring it up, when that's out for public comment.
Well, thank you. That way, we can get the houses we have for free. Thank you.
My only comment is, I think we just got another letter last month that we had on spend funds. So whatever program that we need to put in place, wherever that department needs to sit, we need to move forward to make this simpler because, like Alderman Astor said, we've, we've put bus stops up for accounting bus system. We put a basketball court that cost us three times, three or four times what it should have because it's CDBG funds. I just want us to get to a point to where the funds can be used efficiently and timely so we quit getting these notices that we're past due or we're behind. So, that's my opinion. Okay?
I agree with you on that. And I like to think that's why we need the contract to replace, like McDavid and Associates, to manage that money so we can get these projects done.
I, I, I agree. I just, something re- something reminds me that there's a reason why we quit using that process. I just don't recall what it was.
I can speak on two of those things. So that letter you're referring to comes every year regardless. It doesn't matter if we spend it quick or slow. They're just reporting as to how much money we have left to spend. And as far as why they stopped paying the consultant, it was for the cost of administration. The choice to save on administration basically eliminated how's it been from being affected.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Did the consultant go out and pick bushes and find people that need their house or live for their lives? I mean.
I'm not, I'll have to refer that to Jessica.
Yeah.
Did the consultant go out into the community and try to find people that needed assistance?
Service program existed before I worked here, so I can't have that answer.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So in the, in the current, we had, um, Duffy Field.
Phoenix Project.
It was Duffy Field Phoenix Project, and it was, um, what was the other group that we worked with?
There was three nonprofit groups that we were originally working with, and I think this is the last one.
It was RSC and Duffy Field Phoenix. So the issues with us in rehab when we got here is there was an arbitrary ten thousand dollar amount allocated per house. And even if we just did AC units, which is one of the two groups that can do that, an HVAC unit costs ten thousand dollars, and labor is free.
Yeah, it's on the other.
It's a two-point.
It would, still, I mean, it could be that they could afford it, that labor fleet, but if the program bought, bought the unit or something, I don't know. I just, I mean, I don't know. I just think if I had a couple hundred thousand dollars and some people in the community, their house is big, I believe I could find somebody that would need the money enough that we could spend it on their house. I, I may be wrong, I don't know.
The harder thing is finding a contractor that wants to work through those guidelines, which, if, no kidding, it's a lot of red tape to deal with. And that's why they've seen an issue they have.
So why don't we even get the money then? I mean, why don't we, why don't we keep applying for the money?
We don't, it's based off of our population.
As, as an example, we recently had a project go up and bid, and we reached out to fifteen or sixteen individual companies, and only one returned back that even qualified.
And this, we've had this problem for the last twenty years. The same problem in current every year. And to it got to this point here now. The mayor just said that, you know, due to our population, that we're gonna receive the monies anyway. But, you know, could we spend the money? No, because of the qualification that the people have to meet and they can't meet that standard that they were qualified to receive the money.
We, we have had good luck in repaving roads and new streets. As a matter of fact, we use the CDBG allocations to repay gas and put aside what behind the recreation center. So that, that's something I think you can get out now and we'll get, we'll quit things, so.
So, I mean, before, before the upcoming year, when, when Jessica received some type of notification from the federal government that funds has been, you know, lifted. Um, at that point in time, if we have citizens that have come to the city of New Bern that has, uh, Ms. Deasia Fulmore, because she's one handles this program for. So if she has any citizens that have come to her with an application wanting to apply for some of that funding because of house repairs, then that's where she can take that, those funds and look into that and see if you can hire a contractor to perform those, those repairs. Is it as simple as that? Because you know, I know you said you only had one contractor that, um...
Correct. The, the other fourteen or fifteen decided that the job was essentially too small.
Okay.
Or that they could not meet the federal regulations.
Okay.
And I know things, there's a lot of them are renters.
I know that, but I'm talking about homeowners. I'm talking, I, I'm not talking about, even though they said they are now trying to find, they have, looking for programs or whatever to, to help those landlords to, you know, to upgrade their properties and whatever. But I'm just talking about the individual that, and I'm sure you know some that live within certain areas of the city that need some financial help to prepare so their home. And if the CDBG, what do you mean they don't qualify?
I mean, the ones that, that's, that's the whole problem, I mean, they don't qualify.
I, I have referred numerous people to, to Ms. Fulmore that qualify for this program.
Okay, but the ones that I have.
And I, and I'm basically, a lot of them are either widows or seniors that, you know, need, need help.
So, so I guess.
The few that do qualify, then it's very hard to hook them up with a contractor qualified to do the work.
Correct.
To do the work.
Correct.
And Deasia does a great job trying to find alternative help for some of these people we have to turn away, which is not necessarily in her job description. But she never just says, we can't help you. She, she tries to hook them up with community resources that might be able to help her without all of the restrictions of this program.
At the end of the day, it's a flawed federal program. It's, yes, it's quote-unquote free money, and we get it because we're entitled, but the red tape and the strings that come attached to it makes it very difficult. That's why we still have the house that was sitting right here on this lot. It's still vacant, right, ZEB? You can't, you can't sell it, you can't rent it, you can't do anything with it because you can't check all the boxes that are required from CDBG. All right, I think we beat that dead horse.
All right, any other questions, let's move on.
All right. Any questions? Let's move on to redevelopment commission. That starts on page one eighty-five. This recommended budget is one hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, which reflects a five point nine percent increase of the current year revised budget. This includes salary, benefits, training, and supplies and materials. This also includes two hundred thousand dollars in capital from the redevelopment commission fund balance for land acquisition, site preparation, and demolition for the FY twenty-six year. Any questions on the redevelopment commission?
Where is that from?
It's its own redevelopment. It's, the redevelopment is its own list of its own department.
It's more from planning, but it's still.
They're, they're housed in the development services. And then our, our next one is on page one ninety-one, Public Works. This recommended budget is nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, fifty-eight dollars, which reflects a nine point nine percent increase of the current year revised budget. This budget supports street maintenance, building maintenance, streets and sidewalks, stormwater, traffic control, and liability and property insurance. Five hundred two thousand dollars in capital for vehicle replacement, equipment, roadway and sidewalk improvements, traffic control, building improvements, and stormwater enhancements are included. Any questions? We'll continue moving on. All right. Our next tab is other funds. All right. So we're going to be with the municipal service district. We covered this during the budget presentation as well. MSD's property valuation remains two hundred million for this year. The MSD advisory committee was established in September of twenty twenty-three and they started meeting in January of twenty-four. They have been working on several project recommendations and we anticipate those recommendations coming to the board within a very short period of time. Next, next. So this budget, we've already talked about the custodians, so that will not be in this. This budget includes parking control personnel and maintenance related projects. And they include tree maintenance, pressure washing sidewalks, restructuring city parking lots and sign upgrades, replacing the banners, Hollock Street Parking Lot Concrete Gutter Project, and repainting utility poles. We are not recommending any change to the MSD absorb tax rate of eleven twenty-two cents because we anticipate spending quite a bit in this budget here. Any good answer to any questions right now? Any questions? We'll go to that one. Ms. Kim?
If you look up at the screen here, we've got various other funds divided out into their, we've got the page numbers on it. So I just want to go over that real quick. Community development, that one is proposed at zero because we need to make the allocation for that. And then the redevelopment commission, which is pages three thirteen through three fourteen, that's at two hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred. That covered, the purpose of the redevelopment commission, of course, is the land purchase, development, I'm sorry, development land, right? And then professional costs, utilities, and other supplies and materials. The two one two four, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, that's pages three fifteen to three eighteen in the amount two hundred and twenty thousand, five, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that consists of salaries and benefits and professional services. New Bern has a share of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred for that. And twenty-nine eleven, which is the emergency nine-one-one, that's page three nineteen through three twenty, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen. That's replace voice logging recorder and time synchronization hardware over. Okay, and then we have over five hundred thousand dollars fund balance available. The police special revenue fund, pages three twenty-one and three twenty-two, is for special investigations for thirty thousand dollars. Department of Justice Equitable Sharing, page three twenty-three and three twenty-four, is for play travel and training, maintenance, practice, and supplies related to police department. Twenty-nine twenty-four is the Department of Treasury Equitable Sharing, and that again is zero at this point. Twenty-one, twenty-nine twenty-five is the public private partnership, pages three twenty-seven to three twenty-eight. That's the facade program for ten thousand dollars, I'm set aside each year.
Is that, is that being used?
I don't think it's been used this year.
Not this year?
One of the issues that we've been working with legal law is, just like with CDBG, there's a certain period of time for these programs. We don't just give you the money and you have to stay in the house or stay in the business for a certain period of time. So attorneys are working through, actually, with it overseas.
We have forty-three eleven, which is the Water Capital Reserve Fund. It's just a subset, future funding for capital purchases. Right now the sewer capital, sewer debt, and water rate stabilization funds, those three funds are in here because they had prior year expenditures and those are zero dollars in most funds right now. Sixty-one eleven is the Inflight Benefits Fund, covers our health, dental, like work comp, and unemployment because we're, we're self-insured and that's telling me four hundred and forty thousand dollars. You'll find that in pages three thirty-seven to three thirty-eight. And then other post-deployment benefits is pages three thirty-nine and three forty. That's for the post-deployment set aside to fund liability. Right now we do not have any budget within that. We transfer a hundred thousand dollars annually at the end of the year. We have available within the fund balance to help contribute that fund. These are your special revenues and your funds. So to recap, the general fund proposed budget is an increase of seven percent. As it states with fifty-two million, six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and six dollars, our enterprise funds. With water fund having a five point three percent increase, sewer fund six point three percent, electric fund six point one percent, and solid waste fund at eight, eight percent. All other funds, we have about a three percent increase. Remember, most of the, what percentage of the other funds is the Inflight Benefit Insurance Fund? So our total city budget is one hundred sixty-five million, eight hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars with a seven point four percent increase from the FY twenty-five adopted budget. Any questions so far?
Seven point four percent. What makes up that other four percent or five point four percent if I didn't see where it was there? I see the seven point zero increase.
It's the total of all of those. Seven point four percent. So you take the FY twenty-six proposed, subtract FY twenty-five, and that will give you a seven point four percent increase.
All right. Any questions or comments on the proposed budget? That's what we have already taken the, so we use some of the recommended changes. How will they be addressed?
So what we will do is we will get together tomorrow morning, talk about those things. We'll end up sending something out to the board with what those changes are, how that will affect, and then that will be on the agenda for the May thirteenth.
And you think that the changes that we talked about were proposed to be implemented within the budget for the electric department were also included, correct? Because we never.
As I, as I stated earlier, the, what I've included in this budget is what I am recommending. What Charlie recommended, I cannot justify based on the rating. So what I also said was, we are going to have to address a rate increase. And so as the mayor made the comment, I'm doing a workshop at some point this summer. We'll get with you a poll of board and do a workshop either in June or July, get back together to meet, talk about that, what, what that rate increase is. Once we see the electric utilities start going in a better direction financially, where we can afford revenue bond or to go out for loans, that's when some of the recommendations Charlie had will be considered for funding by the board.
Okay, so we're done with number one on the item number two.
Okay, item number two, next.
So just, just a reminder on our general obligation bond referendum, we've had four discussions about this. Our first one was in June of last year, followed up on November, then February of this year, a quarterly board meeting. Now we're just kind of another general comment today. So you have the list of projects. So our, on the recommendation we made and what you will be seeing on the agenda item on May thirteenth are parks and recreation, stormwater projects, and streets and sidewalks. So for parks and recreation, we're recommending a total of three million dollars in projects and that would affect the aquatic center, Martin Marianna Park, and seven West Parrot Bar redevelopment. Under stormwater, that would be six million dollars. It was eight million for parks and recreation, right? You said.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was looking at the end of that. Yeah, eight million dollars. I apologize. For stormwater, that would be six million dollars and that includes about eleven different projects. One project that we did not include in, in potential projects was Tryon, George Tryon Street, Tryon Avenue. Tryon Road. And as George has gotten some, some information back, that, that is one point seven five million to do that. We can include this in, in that for the board to consider if you'd like, which would bring that to eight million dollars in stormwater projects. And then we have streets and sidewalks in the amount of ten million. Total of twenty-four million dollars as of right now that the board will be considering at the next meeting.
This is just informational, correct?
This is just informational.
I can't see that. How much is it for roads?
For roads, it's ten million dollars. Okay.
And that's just certain roads?
That, that, that is going to follow the PCR report where we're looking at, I think, the staff's goal would be to start kicking them off. The, the most difficult, worst roads, start working its way down. Kim, you want to talk anything about that?
Um, all right. I have a hard time to say.
It's the same thing that was shared.
It is the same thing that was shared. So bottom of the line is, the board's going to have an opportunity to, to say, yes, we support this and we want to give this to the citizens to put on the ballot for this October. And if the board does choose to do this, then we've got a series of things that we've got to do all throughout the summer. That does include a public hearing that will be coming up to get initiated in June or July for comments from the public on, on the proposed projects and the bond amount. So we currently have on the city's website information under proposed bond referendum that lists all of the meetings, all of the PowerPoint presentations we've covered so far. So the public can go to that and, and look at that. If the board approves this initiative, then we will have a robust Q and A on there. We'll have a variety of information, talk in detail about a lot of the projects and the funding and things like that. So that would actually be populated after the vote on May thirteenth. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to make a statement. Now, I, I, I can agree with supporting this geo bond for our streets and sidewalks and stormwater, but I can't support it for parks and rents. I think that this might, this is, this is sixteen thousand, sixteen million dollar debt that we be putting on our taxpayers' back. And at this point, I, I am not for this geo bond. I'll just be upfront and straightforward with you. I'm not, I'm not for this geo bond. That's a lot of money to put on our taxpayers' back at this particular time in this, in this economy and all the uncertainties and everything. But, you know, I'm always open to the conversation. And another question that I had, I know we'll get more in depth if the board approves this, is that how is this going to affect our taxpaying citizens when it's put on the ballot? Now, any registered voter have a right to vote on these projects, correct?
Any resident of the city of New Bern that is registered to vote can vote for this, yes.
Any resident. Now, you may live in a, an apartment building, so you're not paying for this bond referendum. You're not paying for this bond, this debt. It's taxpayer and citizens that own the property that's paying for this debt. So I, I look at that as, and we don't know at this point how much of a percentage of taxes that we're going to have to, did you, what, three cents, four cents, five cents?
So where's the solid handle?
The total, the total funding, if, if the board approves the entire proposed amount of twenty-four million dollars, I believe that was five cents?
It was less than five because we don't have the board all at one time.
I remember the presentation, but I thought.
So let's just round, let's just round up and say five cents. Go to the next slide. So how would that, how would that affect if you owned a hundred thousand dollar parcel? If we had a five cent increase, that would affect your property taxes by fifty dollars each year. Likewise, if you had a four hundred thousand dollar property, that would affect by additional two hundred dollars each year.
For the duration of that loan, which is what, twenty years?
For the duration.
That's right, twenty years.
And that will vary because it depends on when you, because we're not going to start, you wouldn't start every single project the first year it would be phased in.
We have seven years plus we have the option to, to apply for an extension for additional three years. So it's ten years for this.
That's understandable and I understand that, but it's the bottom line, you're still paying back. You got to pay back this twenty-four million dollars.
I think the great thing about this is the people get to change. If the people agree with you all the best and they don't want their taxes to go up to fund parks and recreation improvements for, to provide additional amenities for children and youth in the community, then they don't have to vote without doing one.
Now, I'm talking about those, those owners that don't own real estate, don't own property, don't own a home, but they are renting. That's, that, I'm looking at it from, from that perspective as well.
That is, I mean, under property estate, right?
Question. If this gets to the ballot, will it be itemized?
There will be.
If the board approves the three, there will be three questions. And then will be parks and recreation, if you support that, you can check yes or no. Streets and sidewalks, you can check that, yes or no. Stormwater projects, you can check that, yes or no. So it'll be, it's broken down. It's not all one thing.
Will be itemized?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm prepared. I mean, they recalculated it. It was three point four six cents.
Anything else on the geo bond discussion? Okay, this time, if anybody from the public would like to speak, feel free to come forward.
Good afternoon, board and mayor. Thank you for all you're doing. I do appreciate your map. I have a couple of questions. The CDEG funds that were used for the U-Banks, how else to move it? Was it authorized to use that money to move the house? I understand there was a question back when Mr. Rick Gary was here, that funds couldn't be used to move the house in New Bern. So just want. So just wondering about that. And when the CDBG coordinator presented, I think it was in January, she said there, you know, there was difficulty finding, you know, connecting the 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 people that need rehab because the cost was ten thousand dollars. And the materials, like the the cost for ten thousand dollars was said a long time ago, and materials have, prices increased. Who determines the ten percent? Is that fund? Who who does that? Or is that the board that sets that amount? And what other FEMA funds were frozen? I mean, sorry, federal funds were frozen. And how much is paid for the deposit on the fire truck? How much is pending? And what is the total cost if FEMA does not cover that change order from the DP station to the fire truck? And thank you.
Thank you.
Staff, want to take time and raise a question?
Yes, sir. We'll do that. We'll get that information for you. And also to the board as well. Anyone else from the public?
Can you have that available at the main question?
Yes, ma'am. I don't see anyone else. So the next and last item is the item to adjourn. Wants to pleasure the board?
Make the motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to second to adjourn. Any further discussion? If you're not all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?